Good evening, welcome to the January 8th City Council meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Present.
Here, Councilor Reno Sawaya. Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Jaramillo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and President Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the journal of... Privilege?
State your point, Councilor.
I have two, actually. First one is I'd like to thank the DPW for their hard work yesterday in the upcoming storm, the storm that just actually was thrown on us. It looked like it was going to be quiet and just rain, and then all of a sudden the snow came down, and I'd really like to thank the efforts of the DPW. And then, secondly, I'd like a moment of silence for Joanne Sorrow, who was an active member, a lifelong member of Revere, and she passed away last week after suffering a long battle. A moment of silence for her, please.
Point. Point of order.
State your point, Councilor.
We have before us tonight the presentation about the updating us on the high school. I watched the presentation of the building committee. Not gonna, I'm gonna be polite and say that it was one-sided, and to use my religion, there were sins of omission when it came to the negatives at Wonderland. But the point I'm trying to make is, we gave a directive to the building team to bring us back the preferred schematic design for the existing high school. That doesn't include a new site selection, and that's what's being proposed. So, either... I didn't know what we were voting on when we voted for the schematic design for the high school at the existing site, and I'm probably gonna wanna see the contracts for Left Field and Consigly. I thought we hired a project management team and a owner's representative, and what I saw was a cheerleading team to try to turn the will of the city council and the will of the directive around. And I'll save my rest of my comments for later, but my point is, my point of order is that what's on the table is the schematic design for the existing high school. You wanna scrap that later and start a new site selection? I don't know how that's gonna work for that timeline that we're planning here. Thank you.
Calendar item number two, approval of the journal of the regular meeting of December 18th, 23.
So move.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered, accepted.
Calendar item number three, approval of the journal of the organizational meeting of January 1st, 24.
So move.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered, accepted.
Calendar item number four, 2024 City Council Subcommittee Assignments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any comments or questions in regard to Subcommittee Assignments from any of the councilors? Place on file.
Calendar item number five, introduction of the City Council Rules of Order.
Motion, Mr. President.
Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a motion to amend paragraph eight of Rule 28. This amendment would bring the existing language up to date and would also allow for transparency and awareness to be brought to the public by publishing the dates of the city council meetings and identifying where the agenda can be located on revere.org. I'd like to point out that due to budget constraints, if adopted, this change would not go into effect until July 1st. The requested change would read as follows. "The city clerk shall provide the local news media, which should include at least one bilingual local news media source that serves the second and third most spoken languages in the city, with a copy of the city council calendar pertaining to the upcoming month's city council meeting, no later than the last Monday of each month, and request publication of same by print. Said publication shall also set forth information identifying the exact web link of where the city council agenda can be viewed online at www.revere.org." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not on the agenda. It's just something special, and you wanna recognize someone that's been working for the city for 43 years. And I knew him when he started as an intern in the old Public Works Department on Broadway, where the Rite Aid is now, that won't be for long after a while, but Paul, would you come up here, please? Surprise? Surprise? Surprise?
What's that?
I'm surprised.
Yes, I am.
So, you know, I was a city councilman in 1978, '79, and I think you started a little before that.
1980.
80, okay, so a little after. And I had a little plowing business, and I started working for the city yard, not as a city employee. And I would always see him down here with a shovel, hopping in a truck, going out and helping the guys clear whatever they had to clear, like they did yesterday. They did a great job, and Paul was part of that package. And over the years, Paul has developed himself into the superintendent of Public Works. And that is outstanding, may I say. And Paul and I have developed a great friendship. He's been great to me, he's been great to all the city councils over these years. And I can't thank you enough, the councilors that have left us in different ways. Thank you. It's obvious today that, you know, you weren't involved yesterday, but, you know, Councilor Sawaya mentioned our guys, and they're here today, and they actually requested this.
Very good.
So, and they didn't want you to know. So, we figured we'd come up, honor you tonight, going from one step in the city to another, and I know you're gonna do a great job, you did a great job as a superintendent, and I know you'll do the same thing as a city councilor.
Thank you very much.
So, what do we got? You wanna read it? Did you make one?
So, we have...
We owe you one.
So, we have one more presentation for Councilor Argenzio. This is on behalf of Representative Janino and Representative Charko, who could not be here this evening, and they've asked me to read this. "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Paul Argenzio in recognition of your 43 years of dedicated service to the city of Revere as a member of the Department of Public Works. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Congratulations."
Well, thank you very much, this was certainly a surprise. I was wondering why my family wanted to come and watch the first meeting. But it's really been my pleasure working for the Public Works Department for 43 years as a laborer and a superintendent, and all what happened in between. I really liked the interaction between the men and the various departments at City Hall, and especially the residents. I loved helping them out and doing what I could for them. I'd like to thank my family, especially my wife, Colleen, who supported me after all these years, all the phone calls in the middle of the night, missed birthdays, missed anniversaries, missed holidays. Thank you very much. And I hope to bring my experience here on the city council and do the best I can, and thank you very much.
All right, let us continue with the agenda, please.
On the City Council Rules of Order as amended.
Motion accepted.
All in favor, all opposed? Accepted.
Calendar item number six, Brian Dakin, senior project manager of Left Field, will provide an update on the Revere High School building project.
Good evening, Mr. Dakin. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council President Brian Dakin, One High Street. We, the project team, are here tonight at the request of the building committee to deliver an update as we lead into selection of the preferred option. The building committee requested that we run through the information we're gonna see tonight with the school committee and with the city council. And we have a handful of slides to go through. I'm gonna speak to a few of them, the design teams here, Dan and Don from Perkins Eastman. Also, you'll hear from a few folks from Consigly, the builder on the project, and one of our advisor volunteers, Joe Lewin. So, I'll just give you one sec to get the slides up. But in general, we've been at this for a while, you all know that, and we are at the point where we need to understand what to move forward with, which version of this project to move forward with next month. This decision has to be made, it has to be made once and for all, of where this project's gonna go, and it has to have the backing of the school building committee, the school committee, and the city council to meet all of the schedules that we're going to show you tonight. We have to get going full speed next month. There's no time to lose, we've already been around the merry-go-round a couple of times. We've looked, we've more or less done two feasibility studies on the two main sites, and that leads us a bit into why we're here tonight, to talk about the best option that the building committee came up with in the last year of study at the existing site. They then asked us to compare that back to the last option, the last preferred option from last year, which was the Wonderland site. I will somewhat reluctantly say that what you're gonna see tonight is Left Field and Consigly and Perkins Eastman, and a number of the companies that's working on this, professional opinion about what might be best. However, we're not trying to spin this in either way, we need to know what project that we're working on. I would say that if one of these two options we're gonna present tonight seems fundamentally better to you, it is not because we're spinning it, it might just be because it's a better idea. Next slide, please. So, this is sort of the dates in front of us here. Tonight, we wanted to look through the results of the building committee study from this last year, which narrowed us down to one preferred option on the existing site. If that's the only site that is to be entertained by the building committee, that's gonna be the option we proceed with, provided that it passes at the meeting on the 29th. The school committee is gonna see the same update on the 16th. The building committee then must select a preferred option on January 17th. It says TBD that we're gonna put together another school committee meeting after, we're gonna ask for another school committee meeting after the January 17th building committee decision to ratify that decision. We're gonna be back in front of this body on January 29th to look for approval. And again, I just need to stress that the results of these meetings need to be unanimity between those three committees. We need to move this project forward. Every time we miss one of these deadlines, it ripples into financial impact to the city. Project of this magnitude, we're talking $20 to $25 million, and simply an escalation, same exact project a year later is gonna be about $25 million more, that's just how it works. So, I would implore folks to ask questions tonight, let us know your opinion. Our goal is for the building committee and school committee to see the reception from the council and to factor that into whatever decision they're gonna make and send back to this committee at the end of the month. So, we're gonna move into a design summary of the best option that was designed, vetted by the design team, by the contractor, by the OPM, by the building committee. It's a four-story option called courtyard scheme, we had various names of various schemes, just so you know. So, Dan and Don from Perkins Eastman are going to take away the next few slides, and then I'll be back, Consigly and I will be back for a couple of other items, then we'll be able to move into some question and answer. Next slide, please.
Good evening, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening, Don Guarillo, I'm with Perkins Eastman, the design firm.
I'm Dan Colley, I'm from Perkins Eastman as well, designer.
Thank you for having us. Thought it might make sense to, before we dive into the design real quick, to remind everyone, we've been at this almost three years, and I think it was March of 2021, we dove into the project and had many, many visioning sessions, five, over the course of a month, two hours long, many, many stakeholders, community members, educators, students, professionals in the room, to talk about goals for the project. We also met with the community multiple times, and with the faculty specifically, multiple times. So, from that, I just wanted to highlight the architectural goals before I go into the design, so everyone could like take a step back and remember what we're trying to do here. So, basically, out of those many, many meetings, over 200 people that weighed in, the goals that we decided on had to do with creating a welcoming school that had a heart of the school, where the students feel welcomed and can create community, that there be flexible and adaptive spaces, including the classrooms, that can change over time as education changes. Variety of spaces, collaboration spaces, all of these rose to the top of some of the design and educational goals. There were community spaces, indoor/outdoor connections, accessibility, sustainability, that it be a safe and secure building, as well as a campus concept. So, just wanted to frame it so that as we look at these, it's really, you know, we're diving deep into the design here, but those are the overarching goals for the project. So, if you would put the slide back up, and if you wanna go to the courtyard four-story, which Brian mentioned, this is the option that came out of the many options we looked at for the existing high school site. Those of you, most of you know the site, but the building would be built over Aracola Park, where the existing fields are. The existing building is where the fields are shown, so basically swapped, and you have Romney Marsh Academy to the north. This site plan, we'll speak to Dan, actually, we'll speak to some of the site differences between here and Wonderland, but basically, this site has to use a small amount of real estate, and we looked at a five-story, a six-story, a four-story, multiple options, and this is the one that the building committee chose actually just last week. So, its main entry is number four up there, it's closest to the parking, we looked at where a building for the central, the district admin, and also the buses that are currently parked there might go. The idea was that those would actually not be able to be on the site because of the amount of space that they're taking up, you can see it over the parking. So, basically, this site has a lot of similarities to the other one as far as program. There's a multipurpose field, a baseball field, five tennis courts, same amount of parking, I think it's 650 plus or minus total spaces. Both buildings are in a flood zone, no matter the site, they both need elevated first floors so that they don't flood with storm surge, so therefore, we have underbuilding parking in both of them. They're the same exact size, they're 422,000 square feet, and they service, the building would be for 2,450 students. So, just wanna lay out the similarities before I dive into the differences. Here, the cars are the blue arrows, they would access the building from School Street, the buses would come off of American Legion Highway. We, from a security standpoint, you like to keep those separate, and we are somewhat able to do so on this constrained site. The blue lines that cut through, of course, that's the culvert that we need to avoid from a, just a building standpoint. We don't want to build on top of that. If you would go forward on the next slide, I would appreciate it. This is a first-floor plan and some building design considerations. It's worth noting, these came out of the comparisons to the five and six-story on the existing site, so I just wanna point out, the most advantageous from a security perspective had to do with comparing it to the five and six-story. That wouldn't necessarily be true as it compares to the Wonderland, so I just wanna point that out. But here, we have a four-story academic wing, it starts to stack over the heart of the school, you can see the main entry, you enter into this beautiful heart of the school, you have all the public spaces, the community spaces. The educational goal would be to highlight some of the programs, the robotics, the culinary, that sort of thing, off of the heart of the school, that it would be a really dynamic space for the students to create a community. That accesses into the learning courtyard, which is actually an outdoor space, the only outdoor space besides the fields that's available for outdoor learning on this site. And then the academics are along the American Legion Highway. One thing to point out from a sustainability standpoint, those classrooms face east-west. We pointed out to the building committee, that's not always ideal, if we had our druthers, we would keep everything facing north-south, because from a sustainability standpoint, you can control the sunlight, you can control the glares, it's just a, it creates a better learning environment. But in this case, because of the constraints, we did have to face it east-west, but brought that to the building committee's attention, and actually, in all the schemes that were on this site, we had to do that because of the constraints. And I would say that that learning courtyard, you could access it, come in and go up to the second floor of the heart of the school and access the community spaces. So, if you wanna go forward, I can point out on the second floor, the gym and the balcony of the auditorium, so the community access would take you up to that level. So, it could be separate, cordoned off, from the learning spaces from a security and after-hours standpoint. And you can see the academics kind of start to create a doughnut, if you wanna call it that, or a circular motion around that learning courtyard. So, that learning courtyard is for the students, I guess the community could use it, but during the day, it would be only accessed from the school. And then you can barely see it, but there's underbuilding parking, as I mentioned. So, next slide, please. This is a massing diagram, you can see the main entry to the north, the academics as they wrap around that outdoor courtyard, and then to the left or the west of the site is all the community spaces, the health and fitness, the auditorium, and the heart of the school, obviously, the restaurant for the culinary is all accessible off of that more community side of the school. So, next slide, please. So, as it relates to the Wonderland, I think you know this site plan, this was what essentially was shown last year, not a lot has changed, because we weren't looking at this, we were looking at the existing site. But as it compares, you can see that those site programs, similar, as I mentioned, there's a multipurpose field, a baseball field, they actually were able to overlay a additional multipurpose in the outfield here. The five courtyard, or five tennis courts are off to the, kind of the west of the site, and the building is situated basically where the Old Dog Park was, right, on the west side of the site. This site has its constraints, just like the other, and it's got the Eastern County ditch, which is that blue line, the cyan, like the other site showed. But here, we have flood mitigation to the north of it, which, again, we mentioned, we were in a flood plain, Dan will speak a little bit more about that, but we do have to have compensatory storage for any water, so we have to build that into the site plan. But you would access it, where it says North Shore Road, you would access it across from the MBTA Wonderland Garage, you could get all the traffic off of the main road, the blue wraps up around the baseball field, that's the car drop that would take you to the main entry, which is where the arrow is, where it says berm, and the buses or the yellow, they would come in and go off, and they would drop on the south side of the heart of the school. So, if you would move forward, I will walk you through the building a little bit. So, as I mentioned, the main entry is where the largest arrow is, that takes you into the heart of the school, it connects through to the learning courtyard in this particular scheme. We have all those relationships that I mentioned in the educational goals off the heart of the school with the connections to some of the program, and then there's essentially everything to the north, it could be used for community space, we have that auditorium, the gym is over the locker rooms, one thing worth pointing out that we learned in the last year, the lockers and gym, it's preferred to have them on the same floor. We do have a little bit, we were able to make that happen in the courtyard four-story scheme that I just showed you. We believe that with further study, if this one were to move forward, we could probably make that happen in this particular scheme, we didn't know that when we designed this over a year ago, but now that we know it, we have ideas on how we might be able to make that comparable to the courtyard scheme. And then the academics are the south, that sort of, that wave out, and that's intentional, it breaks up those longer corridors of classrooms into smaller neighborhoods where students can get to know each other and learn within their particular neighborhood. So, everything to the south is more academic, and from a security standpoint, easy to lock off. I guess, go to the next slide, yeah. Excellent, you can see the upper floors here, we've got the gym, the second floor of the heart of the school, the media center's at the third floor, and then all the academics are fairly nicely stacked, one on top of the other, to take you up the fourth floors. And then we have underbuilding parking, which is comparable to, again, what we did from a programmatic standpoint at the courtyard. If you wanna go to the massing study, excellent. Apologies, this is rotated, but you can see the wave of the academic wings sort of stand out, so that's actually to the south of the site, and all the community spaces are off of the main entry, which you can see, and the car drop, which in this case is, we're able to get up closer to the front yard, or the front door, apologies, than on the existing site, and that just has to do with where the cars were able to access the adjacent neighborhood roads getting out of the existing. So, if you wanna move forward a couple slides, I think Consigly's gonna come back to this one, and sorry, we had these out of order, but they were put together last week. If you would go forward, I think it's three more slides, and you'll have to come back to this one, I apologize. Yep, right here, right here, perfect. And let me just finish here, Dan. So, basically, between them, I wanna point out that sustainability, we're targeting lead gold in both schemes. I would say that it's a little more sustainable on the Wonderland, just because we're able to get that north-south orientation for the learning, all the primary learning spaces, which is, again, ideal, I mentioned why we had to rotate it in the courtyard because of the constraints. I wanna point out that there's a little bit more learning space on Wonderland, just because there's a time, you know, there's a little more property to spread out. And lastly, I wanna point out from a security standpoint, they're both four stories, they're both accessible, but security, from a site standpoint on Wonderland, we have a little more real estate, and we have the compensatory storage we need to do, that there could be natural landscape measures that keep cars and vehicles a little farther away from the building than they would be on the existing, just because, again, the amount of real estate. So, I just wanna point out again, most advantageous from a security perspective, that related it to the five and six-story, but not necessarily to the Wonderland, they're both secure buildings from a, you know, a verticality standpoint. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dan.
I think it's the next slide, right?
It is, and the words are really small, Dan.
Yes, they are. So, Don hit a lot of the points.
So Dawn hit a lot of the points that I would hit as well, but I do want to talk a little bit about the permitting. Both these sites are relatively, have relatively complex and lengthy permitting paths. They each will require a full environmental impact report to be filed with MIPA, so there's no real difference there. Their big difference between the two is that the Wonderland site requires a Chapter 91 certificate, which is due to the tidal influences on the Eastern County ditch and the historic high tide line that is located just above it. And back on that slide, when you see it again, there's a little squiggly line. That's actually the historic high tide line. On the existing site, the difference is that we will need to go through Article 97 because of the six-to-seven-year duration of construction that the athletic fields that are on in Aracola and Ambrose would be offline. So we would need to go through that process in order to have a temporary fix or a temporary solution to those athletic fields. And as far as the utilities, both sites have a number of utilities that will need to be relocated that actually go under where we're anticipating the construction for either one of the options. The biggest difference is a significant piece of infrastructure, which is the city's drainage system, which in the case of the existing site, is the culvert, which is an unknown risk due to, during construction, due to its location and age. And at the Wonderland site, we have the Eastern County ditch, which introduces permitting complexity and will reduce full use of that parcel. And that's that triangular area that Dawn was talking about being potentially a learning area. That is the area that would be off limits because of the Eastern County ditch. From a construction standpoint, the existing site has two operational schools, as we all know. It's located in a dense residential neighborhood and the impact of the construction process on the educational environment, the neighborhood, the staff and the parents will be significant for that six-to-seven years. From sustainability standpoint, the pathway to net zero building is a bit easier at the Wonderland site, only because we're able to perfectly orient the building to take advantage of that proper solar orientation. And from a security standpoint, Dawn mentioned this, but the Wonderland site does have more usable area. And due to the cut-and-fill requirements, we're able to build in natural, natural boundaries and layers of passive security. And it's always best to have passive security measures than active security measures when you can get them. So with that, we'll turn it over to the next speaker, which I think is Consigli.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Jim Herwill, project exec with Consigli.
Kristi Lyons, senior preconstruction manager with Consigli.
The, our role in the new assignment was to evaluate the three different construction scenarios for the existing job site and then identify the risks associated with each of those that come with construction and how it may impact the community during construction. As we looked at those three construction scenarios, the four-story option did come back as the least costly option as well. And you'll see the numbers a little later. Some of the challenges from a pure construction point of view is, what do we do with and around the culvert while we're building the new school? There was talk about trying to replace the culvert before we begin construction or concurrent with us, and we've determined that cannot happen. We can't do them both at the same time. There's just not enough access. The second problem we'll have is that, once we take over the site, there'll be no parking at the existing school. None. So we looked at taking the field, I don't remember the name of it, but.
Ambrose.
Ambrose Field and taking out the topsoil, putting in a binder course and create parking for someone, probably the construction staff and crew, which means there still will be no parking on-site. If we say you take the parking and use it for teachers and students, and that means we'll be busing craft people to the job site, which probably means we won't get the guys to come there. If they can go somewhere else and work easier and park right on-site, that's what they'll do. So it would also add a cost to the project of, where do we create parking for them? How do we get them to the job site? And it's going to happen at the same time you're starting school and leaving school every day. So it's one of the cons, no matter what scenario we pick, the four-story, five or six, parking is going to be a problem. Craft guys will begin showing up at 6:00. They will look for places on the streets. This happens. We know it happens. Despite us telling them they can't park in the neighborhoods, they still do. Right? So parking will be an issue. The risk of the culvert during construction concerns us. But clearly, we can, we can build on this site. It's got a number of challenges we'll have to overcome. Getting material will have to come off the highway. There was no other way of getting it there. So the way the logistics works, we'll work from the northwest corner and go to the southeast corner so that the crane can be disassembled once we're done erecting the building. Because of the site logistics and the tightness of the site, we'll only be able to bring one crane here for erection of the building. We had two in the Wonderland scenario. So the construction will go a little faster. Chapter 94, 97 is an issue. What we have to do with the fields, if we have to build temporary before we can take these, that could add time on the front end. So, and then this project would be at least a year longer than Wonderland because we have to demo the existing building, then build the new sites. So that adds some cost to the job as well, because it's just a year longer. So, and we still have to do environmental assessments of the site, so we're not sure of those risks just yet. Right? And that will be planned in the next pre-con phase of collecting soil samples and all that. But, so, anything I missed? What was on the next slide?
So, we're almost there. So what's on the screen now is a side-by-side comparison, current dollar values. These are both tied to the schedule that we'll look at in a minute. The top line for both is what we call hard cost, construction costs only. The items highlighted in the darker blue are the total project costs. Projected MSBA grant is just below that, and in the lighter blue is the cost to revere. But I wanted to hit a couple of these items along the way that compare and contrast these two sites. Overall, they're, these, it's the same building, different sites, some different constraints, but overall, they, these are pretty close to each other in cost. We've listed the land acquisition, the $29.5 million value in the chart on the right. We know that's already expended, so I just wanted to remind people that that value wouldn't be part of any future project authorization. That money's already spent. It's in there because that's real money that was spent to acquire that site. The other below-the-line costs that are listed are the cost to take over Ambrose Field, turn it into parking, then turn it back into a baseball diamond, $4.2 million. And also, we really need to proceed with a $40 million contingency to deal with that culvert. Now, people have talked about that a few times, and I want to be really clear about this. If we're going to put in about 419, 419.9 million dollars of construction just along that culvert, we need to be able to deal with it either upfront, and Jim just told you, it's probably a hail mary long shot that we could get the entire culvert hydrology study done in time to put a permanent culvert under the ground before we start building. I'd still like to try for that, if that's possible. That $40 million value is the estimate from the company that's studying the culvert of what it would take to put a structured culvert under that land. In the event that we don't get that done, the $40 million contingency is intended to deal with any failures of the culvert during construction. We need that site to be able to continuously operate if somehow unanticipated storm conditions and just the overall deterioration of that culvert make it fail. We need this project to come along with a contingency fund to be able to address that with either a permanent solution or a temporary underground solution to keep construction going and not have a job site stop for a year. Remember what I said earlier, every year that you lose is going to cost you money for the same project. So there's also a chance that that $40 million plug wouldn't need to be expended if we build on the existing site. If we can't get a permanent design done by next winter, that means we're not going to put the 40 million in place next winter before we start building the following spring. And if it doesn't fail during construction, that money could be unexpended. So I want people to understand that, that the $40 million culvert money would have to come along to prevent risk to the existing site project. It might be spent in full. It might be spent to fix it temporarily if it fails in the five, six, seven years we're building. It might not be spent. I want people to really understand that. Lastly, there's a $5 million plug for the admin building. This represents a value for moving the admin office that's downright off of School Street right now into some other existing building in the city, not part of this project. It would have to be done and opened up by summer 2028, when we plan on opening the building. So we really wanted to get all these, all these items on the same chart to show you folks the overall financial impact to the city. I will obviously note that there's really no way to calculate potential lost tax revenue at Wonderland. That's something a lot of folks on this board are rightfully want to speak about, but it's not exactly something here. These are construction costs, with the exception of that $29.5 million land acquisition fee. Next slide, please, which I believe is the last slide before we're going to have Joe just give you a little summary here. So timeframe, overall, the schedules are pretty equal on the front end. As you can see, the existing site, which is in the middle, I still would like to push to potentially have culvert work to do next winter. That's a long shot because really, that whole tidal system, the whole drainage system needs to be studied from all the way in between the hills, right behind us, all the way out to the ocean. However, starting construction in March, when winter clears 2025, is the goal for both of these sites. It would mean we're occupying the new building, staff and students over the summer and opening it up officially in August 2028. That would be end of story for Wonderland. We build it all at once. Fields are done, parking's done. When the building opens at the existing site, we would then turn around, abate the existing building, demolish the existing building and build the replacement fields. That would take place between the fall 2028 and summer/fall 2029. And the reminder down on the bottom, there is no impact to the temporary fields or the admin office on the Wonderland scheme. There are for the existing site scheme. So we wanted, one more speaker before we turn it over to you folks for questions. I really just wanted to remind people that we're looking to bring back input to the building committee. Building committee needs to know if they're picking from one or two options here next week. And we really need all the information and communication between these three committees, including the school committee, so that we can get this decision done this month and we can move forward. Even losing a month or two, the dates on the screen probably do not hold. We really need to get this moving forward. So on a high level, I'm going to now introduce Joe Lewin. Joe is a volunteer advisor to the building committee. He's been on all of our meetings. He's been on team working meetings. He's got an extensive background in construction and development, including the public sector. He's been a valuable resource to us. We thought he'd be helpful for you folks to hear from him before we really, the rubber hits the road on this project. At that point, we can then go into some Q and A.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Joe Lewin, 30 Aqueduct, Whalen, advisor to the school building committee. Just to let people know who I am, since I may not be very familiar, I'm a retired construction executive, last 25 years before I retired, which was a while ago. Worked 15 years for Harvard and 10 years for the city of Boston. Seven of those years, I was the director of construction for the city of Boston. Since retiring, I volunteer on public school and nonprofit construction projects because oftentimes, those entities don't have somebody who has a big background in construction. So I volunteered for this one. What I do for these projects I volunteer for is, I sit, I listen, I look at the documents, and then what I offer is my advice as if I was responsible to do the project, which thankfully, I am not. And what I look at is, how would I deliver this project on schedule, on budget, with the least disruption and end up with a happy client? And what I focus on is, what are the best practices that you use, construction best practices? And what are the possible risks? And if there are risks, how do you avoid them or mitigate them? Why am I here? I volunteered for the project, but I didn't volunteer to come to city council meetings. But the mayor asked me to be here to give the same advice that I gave to the school building committee last week. I am not here to try to tell you which site to pick because I have a narrow focus, which is how you deliver the construction project. You guys have to have a much bigger view of all the things that you have to take into account to do this. For the sake of time, I'm going to go quickly and, you know, you can stop me if you like. I'm going to talk about three things, and a lot of these things you've already heard about, so I'll go pretty fast. One is, what are the risks that I see compared to the two sites on delivering on time and delivering on budget? What disruptions you can expect from the construction project and how they differ on the two sites? And then a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention about capital planning, because even though that really is not usually mentioned, it is an impact here. Several of the things I said, maybe a lot of things I said, were already said. Managing risk. Everybody here manages risk. If you have a homeowner insurance policy or a car insurance policy, or if you shoveled your snow yesterday, you know that you're managing risks. When you manage risk, you're looking for what bad things can happen and how you can avoid them. Good construction project management means you manage risk. School projects are a little different than a lot of other projects because of the schedule. School projects typically need to open on a date certain. If you had a firehouse and you were two months late, doesn't make a whole lot of difference. But in a high school, it makes a lot of difference, so the risk you really care about is schedule risk. And of course, as Brian had mentioned, time is money as well. So that's a lot of the risk I'm going to focus on. Risk, number one, and this has certainly been mentioned, in general, if you are a construction project manager, you really like to avoid projects where your project is dependent on another project, because you really have lost control to a certain extent of your schedule and your budget. And so what you have with the culvert is you have a project that maybe in some way you are dependent on that project. Can it be done first? That would be nice. Is it going to be done concurrently because something happened? That would not be good. Should it fail? That would really be bad. So there's so many unknowns, this culvert, that the way I look at it is, that adds a lot of schedule risks. There's a lot of different things we don't know a lot about, and if any of those happen, we could lose some time. As I said, school projects are different. You lose a month, and as Brian's trying to convince you, we don't have a month to lose, you're probably going to the next year to open your school. You could try to do it at Christmas, but for 2,500 kids, that's quite a headache. So the culvert, big project, complicated project tied to a big city project and tons of unknowns, because there's been very little investigation about it to date. Our project is tied up against that, so you don't have a lot of leeway. As Jim mentioned, just traveling back and forth over that to bring your equipment in, that's a risk right there. Worst-case scenario, it fails. Don't know if that could really happen. So take that into consideration, that if you're dependent on another project, you've added risk to your schedule. Constrained site, this has been mentioned a couple of times. Constrained site means what's around you. In this case, the current site has a lot of residential and two schools uptight to that site. Obviously, when you look at Wonderland, that's not a constrained, constrained site. So why do you care about a constrained site? Some of it's been mentioned, but I'll just give you some of the things that come to my mind. You know, how are you going to phase your construction with your trains, et cetera? That's more difficult on a constrained site. Your logistics, where you move stuff, where you lay down stuff, that's more. Traffic, obviously, the traffic flow around the site. Parking, safety on a constrained site, mitigating disruptions to all the people around, even if you had a snowstorm. The difference between having a big snowstorm on a constrained site versus an open site, where you take your backhoe and push everything out of the way, you could lose a day, a week just for something like that. So constrained sites have more schedule risks than unconstrained sites. Third, occupied sites. If you ask any construction person, would they rather build on an occupied site? If you ask any construction person, would they rather build on an occupied site or an unoccupied site? Very clearly, I think all you would agree, that you really don't want to build on an occupied site. The current high school site is a very occupied site. I've been told there's 2,500 to 3,000 people coming and going every day right next to what would be a construction project. What's the problem with an occupied site? So you have things like added attention must be paid to safety, traffic is more difficult to deal with, parking, the site logistics, mitigating disruptions to the occupants of the school because they're on the site. Sometimes you have to change your work hours. Sometimes you have to change your delivery times. Once again, it's just a matter of does this add risk to your schedule? In my view, yes, it adds risk to your schedule. Obviously, if you look at the two sites, and you probably have both ends of the spectrum, right? A very, very occupied site at Wonderland, which is probably, you know, the contractor's dream in terms of occupancy. Okay, so that's risk. So those are the risks that affect your schedule that, you know, something you just want to really think about. Disruption. When I say disruption, a big distinction is risk. Everything I just said may never happen because it's risk, and you're just trying to evaluate. Your house may never burn down. You still have the insurance. It's risk you want to pay attention to. Disruption happens on every construction project. If it's your bathroom renovation or a skyscraper, there will be disruption. And disruption is greater on tight sites because there's somebody to disrupt. In this case, you've got two school communities, actually, how I think about it. There's students, teachers, staff, parents, they can all be disrupted. Neighbors, immediate neighbors, and then several streets back will also be disrupted. And then in this particular case, which is not true of all cases, there's going to be very significant disruptions to people who use recreational fields in Revere. What kind of disruptions am I talking about? You get noise, you get dust, you get vibration, visible distractions for students looking out the window watching some construction. Traffic is definitely going to be a disruption. Parking is definitely going to be a disruption to the neighbors. Loss of amenities like the fields. Speaking of the fields, one thing that's different about this project than a lot of projects is oftentimes when you do a field, you take care of a field and replace it or something, it's usually one field, it's usually for one season, something like that. To me, this is unusual in that you have three fields offline for five years. I mean, that's a big, big disruption for a lot of people. The difference between the two sites in terms of disruption, again, is very obvious. One site, there's not many people to disrupt, and the other site, there's a lot of things that can be disrupted. The last thing I want to talk about is capital planning, not often mentioned, but what I mean is any project, especially a new, big project, has impacts on the capital plan, the other public facilities in Revere. There's three things that I'd like to mention. One is overcrowding K through eight. High schools being built because you have overcrowding at the high school population, but as I learned watching this process, you also have a current or future K through eight overcrowding problem. I also watched in this process, when they searched for sites that the City of Revere owns, where can we build schools? There weren't many, if any. So that being a problem, I looked at it because I used to do capital planning also for the City of Boston. What an opportunity that you can solve three capital planning problems. High school overcrowding, middle school overcrowding, because you can use the current site, current high school for middle school. And three, then that by domino effects means other schools, where the middle school just came out of, can be used for elementary. So I just put that in front of you. Think about that capital planning aspect that for future capital planners, future city councilors, you may have solved their problems, which would be great. More minor one, but I'll just mention it because it came up the other day. MSBA likes you to say how you're going to expand your high school. Now, I know the last thing you want to think about is expanding your high school that hasn't yet been built. But I'll just mention, on one site, you can expand it horizontally. For example, if you were going to add something to your house and you were living in your house, you'd much rather go sideways than tear your roof off and go up. This is true especially for, you know, big buildings that have occupants. So on Wonderland, we know you can go sideways. On the current site, you might be able to, but it's a consideration. This we'll have to get into in a later design phase. The final thing, and I'm just going to mention it again, for me, having three sons, all in athletics, fields are so important to a community, and you will feel this one, believe me, when I talked about disruption, you will feel the disruption of fields maybe more than anything else in your community. From a capital planning point of view, taking three fields offline for a long period of time with the current site, and then when you're done, you have no more fields, you haven't added any fields, is a different situation than Wonderland where you don't take anything offline, and when you get done, Revere has more fields. So again, from my narrow perspective, which is delivering the project and capital planning, that's why Wonderland looks good, but I clearly understand you have many other issues besides that, and I'm happy to answer questions now or contact Brian and he can put me in touch.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Joe.
All right, I'm here to rep-
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Name and address for the record.
Patrick Keefe, 44 Kilburn Street, Revere. Thank you. Mr. President, Honorable Counsel, I just wanted to wrap it up and bring up a few points. First of all, thank you to the team for bringing this presentation to the committee tonight. I sat here last year, as you know, I've sat here for the last many years, since January of 2020, before we knew of this global pandemic, we started this process. And now we are at that critical point where the rubber does meet the road. And you're going to be faced, the 11 councilors on this stage tonight, are going to be faced with that decision to make, which fork in the road do you take? So you're going to go right? You can go with the current site, and that's an option that's certainly on the table, and certainly you're paying for that study. We all are citizens, and that's a process that you're going to go through tonight and for the next month or so. And there is that opportunity that, as mentioned, to go back to the Wonderland site. The reason being that that was brought to fruition was the MSBA reimbursement rate had changed. So last year, when the cost of the Wonderland site was something that was a little bit exorbitant, since the rate change of the MSBA, we've actually seen a site that cost to the Revere residents is actually less. Even though the total project is going to cost more to the taxpayers of the Commonwealth, the citizens of Revere will actually spend less because the MSBA reimbursement rate has come down. But as you know, every time you wait and delay, the cost of the project is going to escalate to the point where if there are any further delays, I'm actually extremely concerned that will completely be pulled out of the MSBA process. So where do I stand? I think everyone knows where I stand as far as which site I prefer, and I just want to let you know how I have gotten there. I got there because of the four years, three and a half years that I've spent on the board to overview the sites, and I listened to the experts. It's as simple as that. Every time we talked about different sites, we kept going back to the word Wonderland. I know that it's a really difficult decision, and I don't want to force you on this. Much different vibe than we had last year. I think you can all tell. I want you to make the best decision. I wanted to go back to Wonderland. The entire School Building Committee did ask to have that re-reviewed because every time we talked about building at current site, it was what if we had this, or we could do this if we were at Wonderland? So using current site seriously constrains our environment. It limits us for future growth. It takes us into so many bad, long-term decisions. And I do understand that the factor of lost tax revenue is serious, and as the mayor, it'd be easy for me to stay at current site. I want the tax revenue. That would be the easy decision for me to make. But I hope that you make the right decision, and ultimately, it is going to come up to you. So all I'm going to leave it with is I have asked the experts in the room and in the mayor's office and throughout to offer as much time as you need over the next three weeks before you have to ultimately make the decision, you're going to go left, you're going to go right, and you're going to make the decision. You have them at your disposal, obviously individually or in groups of two if you'd like, because we don't want to violate any open meeting laws. We want to make sure that you have the information you have. So as much information as you need from today until the next council meeting, when you ultimately will have to make a decision which path you want to head, the mayor's office and all the resources in that room are available to you. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all very much for your presentations, Mr. Dakin, Consigliere. I'd like to open it up to the council at this time, and I'm just going to simply start down at this end, and just please raise your hand if you'd like to say something. Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first question is about the culvert. It seems like the total reconstruction of the culvert seems to be relatively new information. Who made that determination, and when was it made?
Sure. So there is actually a company called CDM Smith, nothing to do with the project, that's studying the culvert, doing a hydrology study, you know, end to end. And the existing site's a small portion of that. So we reached out to them a number of times this year as we revisited the existing site, and their advice, that $40 million number came from their advice, understanding what's underground. Right now, it's just a corrugated pipe with some stone foundations. It would have to be a pretty big engineered concrete system. Rebar would be pretty large, and I might quote the wrong number, but they gave us a per linear foot cost that translated into the $40 million value. So we would need to engage them better or potentially supplement our team, the project team, with somebody who's capable to do that end-to-end study faster than they can to arrive at a real value. Right now, it is a plug value.
And if it is determined it has to be a complete replacement, there seems to be a little confusion. Would you do that prior to the potential building at that site?
Right now, the plan is, no. Right now, the plan is to not move spring 2025 commencement of high school construction. If a permanent design for the culvert could be implemented and bid by next winter, that works better done in the winter because there's less flow through there. That would be the goal. But pushing off high school construction to give time for that study to finish would cost tens of millions of dollars in escalation for the building because the building's so big.
So it still could be replaced after construction?
Could definitely, exactly. So if a design can't be achieved and it doesn't fail after tens of thousands of trucks drive over it, you could spend $0 on the culvert and it would have to be done after, correct? Yep.
Thank you. Now, I have a couple of questions.
Would it require tearing up the newly done construction?
Yes, if it was done after, there would be disruption to the roads and the sidewalks, et cetera. It'd have to be ripped up to replace, correct? That's what Dr. Kelly was mentioning.
Okay. Now, at the Wonderland site, the high school, as you have it designed, does it take up all the acreage that we own there now?
With paved surfaces and building, no. It takes up all the space that we and the team believe it can after it goes through the MEPA process. More or less, for every hill you make on that site, you've got to make a corresponding hole so that it all balances off in a storm. So right now, it's pretty much maxed out. There would be a future point of the project where there could be a determination on, do we not build one of those fields and reserve the space for potential development, tax-yielding development, et cetera? But that question would be impossible to answer until we go through the MEPA permitting process.
Because there was some discussion a while ago that even with the high school going there, there would be several acres that you could commercially develop. And in addition to that, I spoke to Tom at the Community Development Office, the commuter rail station. Where does that fit into this project?
We have a basic understanding of where the commuter rail wants to go, and there would certainly have to be more coordination, but we don't believe the design is sort of penning that process in. We wouldn't design the site and permit the site such that you couldn't permit a T-stop. So we would love, if we were to be at Wonderland, for that process to accelerate a little. I understand these regional transport projects don't go too fast. But we believe we're leaving the appropriate amount of space, and we could offer a design that could be permitted at the local and state level that would leave enough room for the train station. And if the city were to decide to only build one field instead of two, it could also yield developable space for tax revenue.
Okay, because that's a serious question for me, that commuter rail stop, that that certainly can't be negated by putting in a high school.
Agreed, 100%.
Okay. Very good. Would it be possible, if I could ask a question for somebody in the audience, like Mr. Capizzi?
Ask as many as you'd like, sir.
Thanks.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Paul Capizzi, City Solicitor, 281 Broadway.
Thank you, Mr. Capizzi. I know you probably can't talk about the ongoing negotiations, litigation. Are we pretty much assured that's ours and we're going to be paying for it some way, and that's our property, and it's not going to be given back? Or that's not one of the options? If you can't answer that, that's fine.
I really can't answer. What I can't say is that we own that property that is ours right now. We have the deed to that property.
Okay. Thank you. And may I ask Tom a question from?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, Tom.
Could you just pronounce it once for us one more time, please?
Skurowski.
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 So way simpler than in my head, got it?
Yeah, of course.
So I spoke to you today, just to let everyone know. There is some grant money that's going to be available to do a feasibility study or a design for that station?
That's correct. There's a $4 million earmark from Representative Clark, and my job in the last few months was to make sure that the MBTA was aware that they had $4 million just sitting under their couch cushions. They now know that they have it, and they're willing and committed to designing a commuter rail station there. And in the next year, it's going to be our goal to really push them on that, to make sure that this moves in tandem with the school design process, which, as Brian noted, I think leaves ample room for both of these to communicate well together. And frankly, the new parking structure that was developed at Wonderland, the subway side of Wonderland was actually developed to allow for a potential people mover to connect to that parking, so there could be some synergies with providing parking for commuter rail folks as well as the Blue Line riders, and there's plenty of capacity for that.
Thank you. Questions about financing? We can leave that to another time, I suppose.
I would love to get some questions about finance.
Okay. Mr. Viskay, could I?
Paul's taken up all the questions tonight.
You won't have any else?
Richard Viskay, CFO, 281 Broadway.
Thank you, Richard. Whichever site we choose in conjunction with the School Committee, are you fairly confident that it can be funded? I know you made a presentation probably about a year ago, and there was all kinds of options, an override, changing employees' health care, dipping into the CIT fund, trash fee. Are we going to be able to finance either one way or another without those very distasteful things?
I mean, the short answer is I believe so, yes. And I know when I gave that presentation, it was meant to kind of give a menu of options, tools, so to speak, on ways to generate additional revenue, create some savings, build reserves to pay that. Again, strategically speaking, it's hard to know where interest rates are going to be in 2029, how much the ultimate finance is going to cost. You know, we've been building models for the last three and a half years on this. I do believe with the new growth, especially the HYM development, $46 million in new growth over 20 years, that is a vital part of ensuring that we can pay the debt service on this. And like I said, we're building the debt models. Every time there's a new plan design and a new timeline, we build those, and then I have to drop them into a forecast. So certainly don't like to alarm everybody, but I like to give everybody all the options on ways to make this happen. If one thing goes bad, we need some contingency plans. But the way it's modeled right now, I mean, we can afford it within the confines of the budget, assuming that all of the assumptions I'm making as we make a five-year plan, which has now turned into a 20-year plan. So I mean, I'm pretty confident we can do it. It's going to take some fiscal discipline. It may take some, you know, hard negotiations and such, but if we're tracking new growth the way we've been hitting it the last couple of years and basically the first building being erected- and basically the first building being erected over at HYM now, if that continues to go well, those new tax dollars, it's really gonna help us pay for that debt service. And just so people are clear, you know, we tax to the levy limit. So, you know, it's not as if we can just take this debt service and lay it on everybody's taxes. It's these new taxes and new revenue streams, new building permits, income, males' tax, rooms' tax. Those are the types of things that are gonna build the capacity. So I just want people to be clear that we have no authority to just put this on the backs of the taxpayers without a vote. So the plan is to pay for this without that type of debt exclusion or override. But I just thought it was good for everyone to know of the options. But right now, we're forecasting to build this within the levy.
Thank you very much. I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor Agenzio. Anybody else on this side would like to speak? Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I would just like to know a little bit more about the Eastern County ditch that was touched upon. What issues could we possibly have with that at the Wonderland site?
Sort of phoning in a friend to help me out, but um... It's actually a lot more of a permitting issue than anything else. It is a perennial stream, and that means that you have a 200-foot setback from it. So on the one side where everything is paved, we're able to build on that. But that does preclude that other side that's marshland right now, meaning that that is not really a buildable area. That's why we don't have that shown as buildable right now. It's also, as I mentioned earlier, it's subject to title influence. So that means that there's... That's where Chapter 91 comes into play. So the permitting pathway for the Wonderland site is complicated because it has not only the MEPA, but also this Chapter 91 piece. Those two things have to be in conjunction, and they'll both be giving us input as we potentially would design on that site.
Thank you.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the thing that stood out to me the most in the pros for the Wonderland site was minimal residential impacts. That's my main concern here. Could I ask Brian a question? Thanks, Brian. So with the existing site, I know you said everything would come off the highway. Is that a guarantee? Or is that... Will there still be trucks using the side streets or the back parking lots?
On a contractual level, as we sign up subcontractors, their contract will mandate that they come off the highway. Will occasionally they ignore that and we'll have to go chase them down? Yes, but the... We think that'll come both through the permitting process and will capture it, the requirement to do that in their actual contract. So there's some teeth to actually pushing back on people just doing whatever they want.
Thank you. I'm more or less just nervous about the side streets and how those residents will be affected. You're talking about a few years of construction all day. Could be during the summertime, just sitting in your backyard. That's all you're gonna hear all day. I'm nervous about cut-throughs. Go, Brian.
I was just reminded that for the demo and abatement phase, we probably won't be able to get most of the building taken away from the high school because it would disrupt... It's going to be... The school's gonna be under occupancy when we're back towards School Street demolishing the building. There's a good chance that during that end phase of the project, we would have to bring things through a different, maybe out to Broadway, maybe at 107. But the likelihood of us getting all those trucks right by a school that's occupied is tricky. So just wanted to...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question regarding... At a previous update, there was a question as to whether or not the baseball field was deeded to the high school. And if it was deeded as part of the high school, it would not be subject to Article 97. Has that been determined?
In the last few weeks, a title history search... I'm not sure what the right word is there, sorry, was completed. We're still... The project team is still interpreting that. Ambrose Field looks to be a definite subject to Article 97. And the two fields behind the high school, honestly, the report went a bit over my head. We're waiting for some input from our design team to really figure that out. But Article 97 would definitely have to happen for the Ambrose Field. It's a TBD maybe for either of the two fields behind the high school. Based on that, what is a couple hundred-page report that we each have to continue to digest.
Thank you. A couple more. The study of the culvert by CDM Smith has not been completed, correct? It's not?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and the MEPA process and the ANRAD process at Wonderland, those have also not been completed, correct? So those are unknowns for Wonderland? Okay. And another unknown for Wonderland, we've talked about the $29.5 million for the acquisition of the site, but that is really an unknown at this point in terms of what the end price tag will be on that site. So I'm just having trouble figuring out how we decide on a location without knowing how much the location is gonna cost. Is that what we're being... You know, is that basically what we'd be doing? Is deciding on a location without knowing the end price tag on it?
Yeah, I was probably gonna say, Paul, I'm gonna phone another friend here.
As you know, Counselor, the matter is in litigation. We purchased it based on our evaluation, property appraisal, which I think was sound. We had some great experts who worked for us. Wonderland, at this point, is saying, no, no, it's worth more. Give us more money. That will be yet to be determined at some point. I would caution against... I'm not gonna caution against anything. You guys do what you wanna do. But to actually try to consider that is very difficult to do. And it won't impact the construction process if that's at all a concern. That's something outside the field of the operation and the schedule, but is merely one of litigation. What are we gonna do with this? Are we gonna settle this? Are we gonna pay more money? Are we not gonna pay more money? Are we gonna go to trial? What's all that gonna cost? But I see that separate and aside from the project overall because that's just the cost of doing business as a government when you take property by eminent domain. Every eminent domain property I've taken, I haven't taken. The city has taken while I've worked here, has cost us some challenge. There's always been some challenge. We took the houses over at Butfor the Hill School, we got challenged. We took the houses for the Parvair School, we got challenged. We took the fields for the St. Mary's Park, we got challenged. That's just going to happen. And in all these situations, if you look at any of the stories about eminent domain, it's just part of the process.
Okay, so I will interpret that answer as it is an unknown at this point. It will be an unknown. And then my... With Mr. Viskay in terms of the funding, I know that Suffolk Downs is being discussed as one of the main revenue streams or funding sources. If it were to happen that there was some economic hardship or something like that, and that revenue stream would not come to fruition at any point in time, how would that impact the city's ability to continue to fund the high school?
It would impact it immensely.
Okay, okay. And then, in that case, we probably would be seeing something in terms of a proposition two-and-a-half override or something like that?
I mean, it's a little difficult to me to say exactly what would happen because it's... There's a lot of things that could happen. But certainly, any kind of stoppage of work at HYM and the ability not to capture that new growth would not be great on either location.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. And my last question, Mr. President, thank you for the leeway. There was mention of the construction manager coming in before the council at some point to speak about the amount of union work that would be done at the project. And I'm wondering if that... I don't think it's been done. Could we still maybe have the construction manager come in and talk about the processes about union build and the percentages of union bids and things like that? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm actually... I accidentally skipped Counselor Jamio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions here. Can we talk a little bit about the sustainability aspects of both sites? First, how much do we anticipate the energy costs to be increased with an east-west facing site as opposed to a north-south facing site?
So that hasn't really been calculated yet? Because we did stop working on the Wonderland site quite a while ago, and we never got that deep...
In your experience, what is the average increase in energy costs?
For a building of this size, it could be between 5% and 10%.
Okay. Where does the current waste management for the current site go to? Where does it get managed to?
You mean the trash?
The wastewater management.
The wastewater management. I believe it goes to...
Or just the water management?
It goes to the city.
Where... What site? Where does it get moved to?
That is a question that I do not know the answer to.
Okay, I could be incorrect in my assessment, but am I wrong to assume that it actually gets moved somewhere close to the Wonderland site? If someone on your team can answer to that?
If you're talking about the culvert drainage system?
Sure.
Okay, that system actually turns before the railroad track there. So this one, that culvert goes under Daylights at the Amazon site, hits the railroad track and turns. And the other one that goes through the Wonderland site is a different one.
Okay. What does the current site mitigation look like particularly for the residents? If we were to build on the current site, how would that be helpful to the residents or work against the flood mitigation at the current site? Same question for the Wonderland site, I guess.
So we would be required to deal with any of the flood issues that happen within the site? It's always our goal to try to be a good neighbor and minimize any impacts or help with any impacts that are coming off of the site. So we would look at the potential for helping the adjoining properties. But as a matter of what we do from a permitting standpoint, generally, they look at the site.
And in your experience, just assessing both sites, I know you've done less work on the Wonderland site of late, but which one has the best potential for flood mitigation? Not just for the building itself, but for the neighborhood?
Well, they're in very different places. The existing site has a neighborhood around it right now, which I believe is impacted by... They have a lot of issues in that neighborhood now, which we've heard in several of our meetings, neighbors have come to the podium and said that.
Would there be potential for flood mitigation problems if we were to build at the current site?
We would try our best to deal with any flood mitigation problem. Our building would deal with its flood mitigation problems, as would our site. But if you're asking about off the site, again, we would do what we could as a good neighbor to try to alleviate some of the issues within the neighborhood. Especially, we would not generate any new issues from the construction on the existing site.
Moving on to a little bit about the timeline here you have spelled out. The MSBA... Is it safe to assume we have a grant with them, right?
Not yet.
Not yet. Can you walk me through the grant process?
Sure, so right now, you're in a feasibility study. The feasibility study culminates with selecting a preferred option and then executing a schematic design on that option. So schematic design was already completed for Wonderland. And we would be asking, if that's the direction we'd be going, we would be asking the MSBA to accept a schematic design submission in February, which would conclude the feasibility study phase. They would then come back with... They would follow up a schematic design approval with what's called a project funding agreement. And we would be back here in July for a debt authorization vote. If we were to proceed at the existing site, we have to complete schematic design. We haven't done a schematic design. So we would be selecting the existing site this month. We would be February 1st proceeding into a schematic design. By June, we'd be finishing the schematic design, submitting it to the state. And more around August is when they'd come back with an offer, a formal contractual project funding agreement offer that then funds the reimbursement moving forward. So right now, we're at the tail end of the feasibility process. And once that schematic design's done, they offer a project funding agreement. That's the beginning of the construction process that brings us through the end. So all the grants you're seeing up here are projected grants based on their approval after we submit schematic design.
So there's a pretty hard deadline at the end of the month, is what I'm understanding, around picking a site?
Yeah, and partially because of the MSBA, but also because we've been shooting for a 2028 move-in for a while. When this process started, we were looking at 2027 move-ins. And really, if we can't move either of those processes I just explained forward, and we can't tell Dan and Dawn and their team on February 1st, this is the job, run with it. I think all those schedules are gonna bend to the point of breaking, and you won't be moving in in 2028. You'll be moving in in 2029. And it's gonna add cost to the project.
That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Brian, you can stay up. I want to ask you some questions. Thank you. So one of the things I'd like to know is... So when the track was open, statistics were that there were more accidents and people killed walking across the street from Wonderland. Now, there's no statistics anymore because Wonderland's been closed for a while. How are we gonna keep the kids safe? We talked about a flyover. The cost that you showed us tonight, does that include extra added safety, whatever? That's gonna be... Or is that just for the school?
Just for the school. Flyover was a wonderful concept that was talked about earlier, not included in this project and couldn't be by MSBA rule included in the project. But more or less, the potential for Wonderland development, other than modification of traffic signals and crosswalks, is inside the sidewalk. Further traffic study will happen at either site. And optimizing traffic lights, potentially changing traffic lights will come with either site. But both are really sidewalk-in projects. None of them are going to fundamentally change the road infrastructure around them.
So how are we gonna keep the kids safe? And that's my biggest concern because that... Wonderland is, as we all know, is the worst place besides Bill's Circle. So I just think that there's more traffic and people are crossing the street all the time. I just want to make sure the kids are safe. Because, I mean, right now, they're crossing through Dunkin' Donuts. They're crossing, you know, they'll be... They're crossing everywhere. They're not using the crosswalks. I just want to know how they're gonna be safe. I know, but... And we've tried to rectify that with crosswalks and everything, but they just walk right through everywhere, wherever they can walk. So... And luckily, we haven't had any kids that were killed yet or hurt. So I just... That's one of my biggest concerns, is how are we gonna keep these kids safe from coming from Wonderland?
I don't have a real slam dunk answer for you other than saying the traffic will be studied, including pedestrian. And really, I'd reference some items we talked about earlier in this project that other people brought up, that the population center of this city has shifted over my lifetime. And you're gonna be talking about a lot of kids coming from the Beach, Mountain Coastal area to get to the existing site as they do now. One other idea I'd just throw out there that's, you know, more something for the city and school department to talk about is there has been an idea since Wonderland is pretty much the local MBTA hub of some type of potential partnership with the MSBA for busing. Maybe it's a partial program. I know the City of Boston does that with the MBTA. So I think either location, but Wonderland specifically, engagement with MBTA would be an important way to keep kids safe. But the further we get from either job site, really, the less influence the project's gonna have. We can look at the intersections around, but it's just... I certainly don't mean to sound like I don't think it's an absolute high-level concern, but the further we get away from either of these projects, there's really just less that the project can do to address various intersections.
I have a couple more questions. First of all, we talked about the culvert, but we also talked about the Eastern County ditch. They said all they need is a permit. But they... You said that it needs to be fixed at some point. Do you have a price tag on that? Because you definitely have a price tag on the culvert, how much that's gonna cost.
The Eastern County ditch doesn't necessarily need to be touched until someone tries to develop that site. It's a permitting issue. It's not an immediate danger. It's not some... Since it is an exposed ditch, it's not something that's gonna collapse potentially. It doesn't have roads and parking over it. So there really is no... If nothing ever happens at Wonderland, nobody will ever have to touch the Eastern County ditch. The second that site gets developed for something, then setbacks come in. Really, fixing the ditch is pretty easy. That's just honestly clearing it out. That's just honestly clearing it out, structuring the side beds a little better so that there's an erosion.
Okay.
But it's more an influence on permitting any project at Wonderland than it is sort of an engineering question. And the culvert at the existing site's more of an engineering question. How much water has to go through there? How deep does it have to be? Um, really, what, you know, what type of construction does it need to be so it doesn't float away? Uh, strange, I know that sounds a little weird, but if you're running that much water underground, um, that has to be a lot more engineered. The Eastern County ditch is exposed. It's, it's basically a river.
Okay. And then I have one, I have two more questions, but one is, um, uh, and I don't know the answer, so I'm asking you. But was the, um, conservation study for the Wonderland site stopped recently?
It was, yes.
Okay. Could you ask, could I ask why?
When Wonderland was removed as the option, we stopped the permitting process for the high school at Wonderland.
Okay. And the other question is, uh, to Counsel, uh, Counselor Kelly's question. If we, and it's probably for Rich Vizkay, uh, this, but if we use the $47 million every year to pay for the high school at Wonderland till 2050, what's gonna happen to the City of Revere and the infrastructure around it? We're not gonna have any money to fix it. So I was just wondering about that. Were you using $47 million to pay for a high school until two, no? 2050?
I use $47 million because that's the number of new tax revenue that is gonna be realized when that place is built out. But I certainly don't want anyone to think that $47 million a year is the debt service on the high school. We're tracking it around 16 or 17 million when it's fully developed. So, I mean, that could be about 35, 40% of it, so.
That makes me feel bad.
Yeah, no, I just, just to put it in relative terms, people keep asking, you know, the big question is, how's this gonna affect the taxpayers? But again, we're taxed to the levy limit right now, so we cannot just arbitrarily raise everybody's taxes $3,000 across the board. We just can't do it without a vote. So what's gonna allow us to build this high school is the new development primarily. I mean, local receipts and state aid and such are gonna help, but the development in the city is a two-edged sword because a lot of people are against it, but the exa- that's exactly what's gonna give us the additional revenue to pay for a high school.
Okay. And there's one more question, and, um, uh, Counselor Argenzio, uh, touched upon it. Uh, he said there was gonna be a lot of, uh, increased services. One of the things that you said the last time was there was gonna be a cap on the raises for police and fire. Uh, is that still gonna hold true?
Well, just to be clear, I never said that any of that stuff was actually going to happen. What I tried to do is give a, a, a full analysis of what types of things the city could do to either raise revenues or cut expenses, because that is how you're gonna create capacity. You're gonna have to control expenses, or you're gonna have to have revenues. So, you know, I, I think the idea, what I tried to do actually backfired, because I think everyone thought that we had to do all these things. What I was trying to do is gauge what types of ideas may be palatable or not. So I really, uh, I apologize for confusing everybody with those options, but it was really meant to be a menu of options that we have as a city, as tools to create capacity when asking how we're gonna pay for this. So none of it has to be done. It's just, um, if we decrease expenses, or we raise revenues within the confines of how we can grow our budget naturally every year, that capacity, the, 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 the real tricky part is creating capacity that when this debt service comes on the books, we have the ability to pay it within the confines of our budget.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this has been very, very interesting, and, uh, I welcome all the, the new, uh, comments by the new coun- uh, counselors. And everybody knows that I've been involved with this thing since day one. And, uh, I, I'll tell you right now, I'm a Wonderland guy. You know, I have been from day one, and I will continue to be a Wonderland guy. There were more negatives, and I'm glad Joe brought up a lot of the, uh, things about both sides. And I think there's more negatives at the existing site than there is at Wonderland. I'm not saying there aren't any, but they're, we deal with those. But all the negatives as far as losing the fields for five, if not more years, I still doubt we can get legitimate fields in there, even though we're squeezing it in. But we don't have parking, very minimal, minimal parking for any of those fields to be used after school, uh, on weekends. And, you know, I just wanna make a comment to Counselor McKenna's comments about the kids crossing at Wonderland, Wonderland Circle. You have to realize, the way this is designed, is designed with the existing entryway at Wonderland Station, coming off North Shore Road, and the exit coming off VFW Parkway. Both locations have pedestrian lights for the kids to push. Unfortunately, kids will be kids. They go as the crow flies. Now, if it's at the existing location, they're still gonna cross American Legion Highway. The, the potential of someone getting killed or injured there is just as large as it now, if not more, because they're closer. Do we want an overhead there if we could in any way, shape, or manner? Yeah, we do. But unfortunately, you're dealing with mass, massed art, and they don't like overhead structures over their roadways. Too many people throwing things over and injuring the cars and people down below. But I think the public safety at Wonderland Circle, at Butler Circle, is a good location. Like I said, the two e- entry points, pedestrian lights, and the kids from Beechmont, and it was mentioned about utilizing the, uh, MBTA coordination with key, with cards, they can get on at Beechmont Station, take the blue line to Wonderland, cross the street, push the button, and they're at school. Perfect scenario. I know there's a lot, everything that everybody said, I understand, you know, having been through this right along. And, you know, I just hope we can move it back. I think, and, and honestly, I don't wanna have to fund non-reimbursable monies out of the ci- city budget. I don't wanna spend the extra $40 million for the culvert because of the new building. And honestly, I don't wanna spend the $5 million on a new administration building. It's not reimbursable. And there was one other item, I think, for, uh, $5,000?
Ambrose Park.
Ambrose Park. And losing, the, the parks, please, folks. The all amount of time that we're gonna lose, these kids are gonna lose, and you're talk- and like I said, it's, it's not five years. I believe it's gonna be more, because I don't think that a government project can follow a timeline that we would like to see. Now, I don't know if it's possible, you know, it could cost a little money. If not, we can put, um, pluses and minuses on when they, when the schedule is. If they finish early, they get a, a bonus. If they finish late, they have to pay extra. Uh, it's less out of their, their budget, uh, what they, what they wanted to get. And interrupting the people on East Mountain Ave and behind the Ambrose Park, honestly, forget it. I think, forget about it. These people have a right to live there in peace and quiet. At Wonderland, you don't have to worry about that. It's not gonna be near the people at Dunn Street and down that area. More positives at Wonderland, more negatives at the current site. I know there's a lot more I could say, but I think a lot of it's been said already that I agree with, that, on the comparisons. Wonderland is the site to go. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. The fact that we're at this process of, of this i- is a little comical. I gotta be honest, I'm slight embarrassed at the fact that we are still sitting here having this same conversation that we've been having for the same two years. Um, I don't, I don't understand how you don't put these projects next to each other and without having a speck of education in anything say, oh my God, this one clear spot that far outweighs the other. That's not only for our students, that's for the residents that live around there. That's for the acquisition of not only Wonderland, but let's remember, we get to keep the property that the high school sits on now. If we build on that property, we never know more property that the city owns again. Okay? Again, we build on the existing site, we have no more city-owned property for any projects. If we put it at Wonderland, that was the purpose, so we got to keep that last, that, that vacant site. Now, I'm glad that we have parking for the construction school, for the construction crew that's gonna build the school, but I'm guessing, Dr. Kelly, we're busing in teachers now, right? Okay. So here's another factor that we're looking at. For three to five years, we're gonna have zero parking for students, zero parking for teachers. You tell me, if you're a teacher and you get an offer from outside of the City of Revere, you're not gonna jump on it in that disaster that you're working in? And that's a fact. I don't care what anyone has to say about opinions. Working, having to get bused to work, just like the construction worker is gonna choose another project, a high school teacher is going to choose another school if they have to get bussed into working there. The residents around that neighborhood, not just talking East Mountain Ave, I'm talking Tapley, I'm talking Ambrose Street, I'm talking, uh, all in and around in, in each area, are gonna be inundated with construction crews, because you know what? I'm sorry, I don't care how much of Ambrose Park you take, you're not fitting every construction worker's truck over there for the time being. So then the dead ends of Tapley, Ambrose, North Street are gonna be inundated with construction crews' trucks from 6:00 AM until 6:00 at night, and that's gonna be an early end. Okay? The fact that we're taking one of, well, I would, I would say the second biggest project in city's history, and we're planting it in a neighborhood, when we have an opportunity to take it instead in an empty parking lot, is baffling to me. We've paid professionals in any world, if you build a home, if you buy a car, if you get an attorney, you have professionals that you get their opinions from. We have paid people, and they benefit zero, zero, by giving us what we want to hear, by, by them saying, oh, Wonderland's the spot. They benefit zero. And let me tell you why. Because their, their, their reputation, it, it, it needs to be them being right. Their reputation lasts on them being correct. So if they tell us it's 39 million, uh, 29 and a half million dollars, and it's $110 million, well, guess what? Revere and Northern Necks City is hiring that attorney, so I don't think they're gonna be far off. I'll give you 40 million, but that's not my concern. My concern is, again, everything we just stated. We haven't even talked about no fields. Counselor Kelly, you brought up the, having the deed of the field, so it wouldn't fall into Prop 90, uh, 97? Yeah, I'll go 97. Um, and, and that might be so, and it would be great, but the downside is we wouldn't have a baseball field. We wouldn't have a high school regulation-sized baseball field for the students to play in. That should be the downside. Guys, I, I don't understand how we're still even debating this, again, like I said, two years later. Um, I think everything that can be said will be, it has been. Um, and I just have one question for, for Mr. Vizkay, if you can come up. You're not a construction professional, but I know you have some, some tax knowledge up there, so if you can give me an estimate, to get to $46 million in 20 years of a build-out at Wonderland, what, what would we put there?
I've been told I'm not at liberty to talk about potential development at Wonderland, so I wanna be careful with that, but, um, I think, uh, T L F is someone who can give you some estimated numbers, but I, uh.
Well, I mean, he says 1.2 billion. You come up with 46 million on a project that's, that's double the size as Wonderland, so how we get to the same, how we get to a number that's quadruple the number that you get to, he should be our CFO if that's the case. But I, I'm gonna stick to your numbers.
In, in his defense, I think he's multiplying it by the useful life of the high school of 50 years, so 46 times 50 is 2 billion, I guess. But again, I, I've been told that I, I can't really talk about potential revenue at, at Wonderland, so I'd, I'd really not like to talk about that.
Well, I'll give you the answer. It's more apartments. It's more apartments. That's the answer. And anyone that tells us different is lying to us. Okay? Counselor, I'm not done. So please, when you talk, you can have it. Don't interrupt me. Thank you. I, I'm not. I'm not. I, I'm not. I'm saying, I'm saying that apartments is the, what's gonna go there to get you to your number. Anyone will tell you that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed for a lot of reasons, but one of the reasons I'm disappointed is that we're being asked to make the biggest fiscal mistake in the history of the city. Now, I said this, I said this a long time ago, and, uh, I'm gonna give you my numbers, okay? I base my numbers on Suffolk Downs is 32 acres in Revere. It's producing 47 million a year after build-out. Wonderland is 32 acres. I said, a year and a half or two years ago, if Wonderland is worth half as much, half as much as Suffolk Down, it's 23 and a half million a year. You multiply that times 50 years of the life of a high school, the number is 1.2 billion dollars in lost tax revenue. That's not talking about, now, Mr. Capizzi's here, so I can't use the number, but there's a substantial number that we're at risk for, 'cause we talked a lot about risk here. Everybody's talking about risk. We're at risk of taking 1.2 billion off the tax roll. We're at risk of a very substantial number for acquisition cost. We're adding numbers onto this project that don't belong there. Number one, I have a, a motion going in tonight for an enterprise fund for culverts and drainage and so forth, and the city needs to pay for that. If you're gonna put 40 million dollars on the high school, at the high school site, you gotta put it at Wonderland. The same thing. We're talking about the delay of the culvert. I wanna build the culvert before the high school. That's my plan, and I plan to pay for it through, uh, the right way. We should've had an enterprise fund. We, we had a chance to have, we had a chance to have a, a building fund for the high school a year ago when we moved it over to the, uh, existing site, and the former mayor took his ball and went home, said, no, we don't want it. And shame on us as a council that we didn't put that building fund in then, because we should've, and we need to now. The bottom line is, I wanna build a high school. I wanna build a high school that we can afford. I wanna build a high sc- there's, there's, I, I got a list of all the negatives. I'm insulted by somebody put no positives at the, at the existing site. The positive is, we don't take a billion two off the tax roll. The positive is, we don't put ourselves at risk for 100 million or, or whatever the number is of the acquisition cost. Uh, the, 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 the risk is receivership if, if the. There's been a, there's been a 4% cut, uh, 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 shortfall in revenue. There's gonna be in-year cuts from the state. Nobody's talking about that. That stuff happens. So when you overextend yourself, you put the city at risk. I'm up here to protect the taxpayers. I absolutely wanna build a high school. I wanna build a high school that's state-of-the-art and we can afford. And we can afford that at the existing site and help pay for it with the funding that comes from Wonderland. I can't give my vision for Wonderland, because I'd really make the property worth a lot of money and, and we'd, we'd suffer in court. So, but there is a vision, and it doesn't include, uh, uh, hundreds of apartments. It includes a, a lot of good stuff. And it starts with a commuter rail stop, and I think everybody, the good news I heard tonight is, everybody's on board with a, with a commuter rail stop at Wonderland. The other thing is, the traffic nightmare at Wonderland just come from Revere Street to Butler Circle at rush hour in the morning. I want everybody to go and do that in the near future. It's 45 minutes for a block. That is the worst possible site for a high school. If I was gonna, let's, let's, all things being equal, let's say we weren't taking a billion two off the tax roll, we weren't paying an astronomical number to acquire this site, if I was gonna vote for a high school there, I would have to have a footbridge. And now... And now we're talking five, seven million dollars for a footbridge or whatever to do that. But that's the only safe way to put kids in that school, as far as I'm concerned. So there's, you know, I can go into the delays that Wonderland will cause, and everybody knows they're there, but we, the other night at the building committee, all those things were left out. I had a list a mile long of the negatives of the existing site, none at Wonderland. No MIPA problems, no contamination problems, no traffic problems, nothing. Let's be realistic about this. Let's look at the facts, not the emotion, because, listen, it is going to be difficult with the Article ninety-seven. We're going to have to rent land. We're going to have, we're going to have to replace the fields while it's going on. And is it going to be stressful? Absolutely. But in the end, it'll be a state-of-the-art high school. If you really want a high school, let's work so we're not putting the taxpayers at risk, and let's do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I'd like to go back to the ANRAD. If somebody could come up to discuss the conservation. I know that the ANRAD was withdrawn to save money. We were unsure about what's going on in the site. What I'd just like to reiterate is, the number of additional flags that were put on, how long the process is going to be to choose a third party to finish the conservation study on the land, and I also still need to know about the perennial streams, the storage of water, the treatment of water, and if there's an annual fee associated with that.
So, Dan or Don, if I misspeak here, jump in, but the ANRAD process started with flagging wetlands. That was done. I do not know the duration of time that those flags stay in effect. I think it's two or three years. It's something I could check. But again, that process, we pulled the ANRAD permit, because if we weren't building a high school down there, going through a permitting process with the high school design was pretty much pointless. In terms of ongoing upkeep of those items, I think that's something we'd have to talk to the team and get back to you a little bit about.
Yeah, it's just, you know, I have been asking that question for quite some time. You know, I am a little bit nervous about the conservation and if it's going to have any impact on the current site or the plans that you guys have. I have a whole bunch of thoughts here, so this might be a question for Tom. Tom, I know that we applied for the site readiness program at Wonderland for the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. It was approved, and that was to determine the best use. And I'm not going to talk about it, but my question is, I'm hoping we haven't done anything on that, because I believe that this grant is going to hurt our case for the eminent domain if we start looking at the land and what the best use is. May as well hand it to the lawyers of the previous owners.
Right, that's correct. So we have not touched that. We applied for the grant in May, following conversations with the city council about, you know, moving forward with the existing high school site, and frankly, some of the conversations about the end use at Wonderland, which I would say is, would not have been the highest and best use for the site or the city's best interest. So we wanted to utilize this as an opportunity to think about next steps here, but also, most importantly, and I think this ties into some of the points that were made previously, we don't have a lot of public property remaining, right? And we'll have even less if we decide to build at the existing site and forego Wonderland. So we have a series of other municipal needs. The new middle school chief among them, but also we have needs for playing fields, we have needs for a new fire station in the vicinity of that area as well. So we were always looking that this is an opportunity for what can we do to maximize the public and private use at the site, and really in concert with some of the discussions as well about, could we carve out additional land for economic development? But again, all that's on hold while litigation is underway.
And that's really what I wanted to know, is if we're putting it on hold during this whole process. Thank you very much. This may be a question for Mr. Deacon. The number and plan that we're using for Wonderland right now, is that the original schematic design? Is it the original price? Or is this newly calculated? Do we make changes to this plan? And the other concern I have is that, last year, this was four-hundred-and-ninety-nine million dollars. We were told that with escalation, with, you know, that this was going to explode. Now I'm looking at it, it's four-hundred-and-ninety-three million, so just, I'm not sure if there were changes to the project.
So the, the design of the building, the site plan, floor plans, same as last year. What we did, the team did, at the request of the building committee, was more or less to pick it up and put it into a similar front-end schedule of, uh...
If I can just interrupt you. The price was four-seventy. It got, after it was value engineered, it was not the four-seventy. So the four-seventy last year is now four-ninety-three. That was the escalation.
Yep. Same building, same everything. What we did was take the schedule, put it in the same front-end, how long would it take to get the building? And since we did a full-on estimating process for the existing site options, we updated the old Wonderland estimate. So we went in, if unit rates changed, we made them apples to apples, but we did not change any design. We didn't spend any time updating the design. It is just brought the dollars up to current-day dollars, and as Mayor Keefe just mentioned, it was four-seventy, went up to four-ninety-two, three. I'm not positive exactly what's on the slide, but that more or less is the cost of a year of waiting. It puts that point in context.
Thank you. And again, apologies for bouncing around here. This next question's about the MSBA. Do we know for sure that if we switch sites from where we are right now, that the MSBA is going to stay and have our back? Do we know that for sure?
I never make a habit of speaking for the MSBA, but I honestly think the answer is yes. We've been communicating with them in the last couple of weeks, as we've gotten this request, and we knew we were going to be running this up through the school committee and the city council. They did not shut it down. They didn't shut the discussion down. They didn't say, if you do that, you're out. They certainly had the opportunity to. So again, I don't like speaking for them, but as long as we were to keep the process moving forward and do it in a responsible manner, meaning, let's not lose another year, I think the MSBA will be there for the city of Revere.
Okay. And thank you, Brian. And this, this next question is for either Dr. Kelly or Mayor Keefe. During the building committee meeting, you both mentioned that you were seeking outside sources for funding, additional funding. Could you just maybe, you know, explain a little bit about what you're looking at and how much we might be looking at getting in revenue?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll answer this. So the, we have all, including your legislature, and have spoken to the governor's office, have spoken to everyone that will really listen to us from the treasury down, including many other municipalities when it comes to the entire MSBA process and the constraints it puts on communities to build schools. This isn't unique to Revere. Building a new high school in communities is really difficult. So we're having a little bit of an argument or a discussion regarding the site. The cost of a new school to our community is going to hurt no matter what. You're talking sixteen and a quarter million dollars at Wonderland, and you're talking about sixteen-eight, sixteen-nine per year for the current site. Obviously, there is a loss of tax revenue. We do know that, and I'm the first one to understand that. So you're going to be in that seventeen-million-dollar pinch per year for whatever school you build, regardless. So that's something we do have to prepare for, but we are going to continue to petition our state delegation to offer more. We got a better reimbursement. We got really good news over the last year. Even with the cost of the total site going up twenty-plus million dollars on a plan, we're actually spending less, which is really nice. We're hoping to continue to grow that reimbursement rate, and we do think that that's going to happen. So we don't come out there, we have to plan for the worst and hope for the best, but we do think that that's going to happen, and there are other things that we, we don't want to, you know, let the cat out of the bag when it comes to possible energy rebates and things like that that are down the road, that are going to be eligible, and other financing kind of tricks that hopefully Mr. Vizki and Diane Kelly and people like you will help champion our community to get some different funding sources back to lessen the burden on our community. But just to reiterate, everyone here, please, including the school committee members that are here, we do have all of these experts on the panel, and we want to make it very clear that you get all the information you can. I know that there's six new councils on this board, and not everyone has spent the last, rightfully so. I mean, if I wasn't appointed to this in 2020, I would, I'd be happy to not be part of it and stand on the sidelines, but I'm in it now, so I'm not going to give up on our community for the last three years I've spent on this board, and I'm staying involved in it. Some of you have just got involved in the last two weeks, the last month, the last six months. That's not enough time to get caught up to speed, so we want to offer as much of an opportunity, because the unfortunate truth is, if you fail to make a decision in the next few months, this is going to go away. It's going to go away. We're going to go back in line, and we'll be talking about a new high school seven, eight years down the road to start the process all over again. So it is a lot of weight on your shoulders. I understand that. Firsthand, I dealt with it, and I respect, I will respect whatever decision you make, and you'll have my support in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Going to eminent domain, so it was, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the forty million dollars for the culvert, was it said that that included contingency costs? Or was that all contingency costs?
I understand why that might be. That number is an estimate of what the separate-from-the-project consultant advised a permanently-designed solution would cost. We don't know if we will get that permanently-designed solution in time. What I'm saying is, it would have to come along with the project as a contingency to be able to address it if something happened while we were building. And honestly, if we were to have to address something while we were building, it's probably a temp fix. It's probably not forty million dollars, but from a planning point of view, it was, the decision was, let's at least plan on it, has to be financed along with the project.
Thank you. And the reason I ask that is, we bonded the twenty-nine and a half million dollars for eminent domain. I feel that we should be adding contingencies to that, because we don't know the outcome, and I'm not going to talk about it, but just to have, just a cushion. Mr. Vizki, thank you.
Great point. To that point, the way we've got it structured, you know, and again, we're not talking finance, I'm sure we'll talk a lot more about that next meeting, but that forty million dollars for the culvert is just as easily shifted over as a contingency for Wonderland. So I kind of already designed this as a swing number that we would have, because there's a contingency for a culvert. On one side, there's a contingency for a lawsuit. On the other side, that forty million dollars can be a swing. And again, I don't want to talk too much about numbers and planning and such, but I think that forty million dollars can swing either way, which brings us right back to cost versus cost.
Thank you. And you actually just brought up a good point. So two, I guess, two more questions where Mr. Vizki would be involved. First and foremost, we've got some bad news from the state today. I think it was what, Chapter Twenty-Nine, Section Nine C, making midterm cuts. Is that going to affect this city and this project in any way?
The short answer is, it affects the city very, very, very small, and it has no, nothing correlated to this project. These are earmarks that have been halved, if not spent at this point, and quite honestly, it probably amounts to about thirty thousand for us at this point, so not going to help the five-hundred-million-dollar project, no.
And lastly, sir, and thank you for staying up here. Mayor Keefe mentioned this council. We have three new school committee members. We have six new city councilors, and I think I heard Council Sylvester say at a meeting months ago that his head is spinning over all this. If our heads are spinning, I can only imagine what they're feeling. When are we going to get the affordability worksheet, so we know what's funding this project? Because for me, that is the number-one most important thing. And I, and, you know, the reason I wanted to sit here is because I want to make sure this council's protected, and I don't want anyone to have to make a decision last minute. I don't want to get numbers, and again, not blaming you for this, sir, I don't want to get numbers even a week in advance. I want these new councilors and the current councilors to have this, so that we can utilize the time that Mayor Keefe's opened up with him and his staff to sit down and talk about this and really dig into it. We did not have that opportunity last time, and I'm happy to hear that we're going to, but we do need those numbers. It's super, it is, for me, it's the utmost importance.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's kind of, all I do is run these scenarios, and first thing we have to do is come up with a final project cost and assume the reimbursement rate. Not the reimbursement rate they tell us, but the effective reimbursement rate after square footage of construction costs and everything is vetted out. Those debt schedules then get dropped into the forecast. It's a five-year forecast. I think everybody got a budget book. The five-year forecast is in there. It's probably the most important part of that, that budget book. I would, I would encourage you all to read it. All the concerns about revenues, expenses, and where everything's going is in there. I know it's not the most exciting reading, but it really does lay it out. Right now, what we're doing is, we're taking the five-year forecast, we're turning it into a twenty-year forecast, because, quite frankly, the debt service, you don't see it in the five-year forecast, because this project is out too far. But to that, I'm happy to give you the five-year forecast, the twenty-year forecast. Again, it's a series of what-ifs, if growth is at X or is at Y or Z. What's the bonding rate? What's the increased expenses on police, fire, DPW, schools, revenue growth? It's a pretty complicated document, so my job is to try to make those assumptions as reasonable as possible and see where that brings us with funding this project. Again, with reasonable assumptions on revenues and expenses, with some anticipated new growth, we build that capacity to fund this debt service. You know, it goes from three million to eight million, to twelve million, to eventually seventeen million dollars, so that's all been forecasted out. Pessimists might say things are not, you know, the numbers may, the assumptions may not be to what everybody likes. People might think the assumption should be higher or lower. Now, those are all what-if scenarios that we can plug in, but anything I bring before this council is usually not an optimistic or a pessimistic. I try to use realistic numbers. The realistic numbers I'm using, based upon the schedules, based upon what I'm assuming new growth and new revenue growth's going to be, new development with some controlled costs on expenses, the debt service fits into the projection. How those things happen in five, six, seven years with regard to staffing levels and, you know, new growth and revenue growth as far as exercises and hotels and cars registered in the city, all that stuff is educated guesses. It's five-year averages, it's projected new growth and what that brings in for new taxes, what it brings in for new cars, hotels, meals, depends on what it is. So it's a little more complicated than maybe I express it here, but all of those, every single one of those categories has a spot where I can put in two percent, three percent, four percent, ten percent, and it fluctuates. But the model we're doing right now, based upon more favorable MSBA reimbursement, based upon, you know, interest rates were five percent last time we did this, now we're at four percent, because they're leveling off. You know, one percentage point on this debt service is two million dollars, so if it goes to three percent, it's two million less. If it goes to five percent, it's two million more. So there's a lot of what-ifs, and what I'm going to try to do is give you what I think is realistic, and if that gap in funding doesn't allow for the cost of the debt service, we're going to have to think cumulatively about what types of moves we have to make to fit it in there, because once we bond it, we're obligated. We can't cut debt service out of the budget. Everything else can get cut, but we're mandated by law to pay the debt service, so. But right now, we're trending toward it being affordable, based upon reasonable assumptions, and happy to give this council the display of that when the time is right.
Thank you very much. I have two more questions and kind of a comment. I don't, I think, I think we're all set, Rich. I think so. Construction question. Commuter rail, if we build at Wonderland, is it going to happen concurrently, or is there going to be two separate projects?
I think the answer to that is, if we stay anywhere close to the schedule that we're presenting, the commuter rail would happen after. Yes?
Thank you. And actually, you might know the answer to this, Brian. The first vote we have to take is January twenty-ninth.
Correct.
And that is to submit the four-story schematic design that was chosen the other night to MSBA.
Correct. It'll be, the building committee hasn't officially picked the option yet. They're doing that next week. The option that they pick will come back to this body and the school committee for, and we need all three of those to be in agreement. That's what we're looking to do on the twenty-ninth. So we'll look to bring that pick back on the twenty-ninth, and it will have already gone through building committee, school committee, and it'll be with the city council.
I just ask because I know this is a very big decision to make, and again, I stress how new the council is, and I mean no disrespect, there's people up here who have how new the council is, and I mean no disrespect, there's people up here who have more life experience and community experience than I do. But it's just, I just want to make sure that everybody is comfortable, that everybody's given everything that they need to be educated. I agreed one hundred percent with the side-by-side analysis. I think every single bit of information is needed so that everybody up here can make an educated decision on what they feel is the right decision. And there is no, the last question is, there is no way that we can push that date back to, say, a council meeting in February?
Without holding, all of the schedules would move and all the numbers would go up. So that's, we're at the point where maintaining occupancy in the summer, in August, September of 2028, we need to make this decision by February. So I don't think it's that the MSBA process would fall apart, it's that all of the numbers and schedules we showed you assume twenty, twenty-five million more on both options and an extra year.
What's, what is the hard date? What is the day that we cannot, not, that we can't go by?
I mean, really, it's, I need to be able to tell Perkins Eastman to start moving on permitting for either site, really, February first, or the schedules don't survive. You know, so that, I understand that puts the pressure on the decision. We're trying to hold the current schedules we have. If it's in the collective interest of the city to move that backwards, we'll figure out how to move it backwards. I just don't want to see more time and money slip away.
It doesn't make sense.
Yep.
You know, I just, thank you, Brian. I'm just very concerned, I'm a homeowner and a business owner. My property taxes for my home went up minimal, but my business went up twenty percent, and that's why I'm so adamant about these finances, and I just can't imagine the hardships that's caused people, and I fear that they're going to go up again. In a community that preaches about how much we love our small businesses, we may very well be putting them out of business, including mine. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any comments? What's the will of the council? Do we want to, we want to table it till the next meeting, or do we want to put it into a committee of the whole and meet early, so we have more time to discuss? Is that, that's what my recommendation would be? Okay, committee of the whole subcommittee. Oh, excuse, my apologies, we do have people in the audience that want to speak. I'm going to keep this minimal, if you don't mind just lining up here so I can have an idea. Ms. Martino is going to be first, because she reached out. Thank you. Just as a reminder, so guys, I just want to keep this minimal to, you know, try to just make your point, I would greatly appreciate it. Everyone's going to have an opportunity to speak. Ms. Martino, name and address for the record, please.
Karen Martino, Ninety-Six East Mountain Ave. Thank you, Mr. President, welcome to the new board members. I'm just going to probably reiterate what everybody else said tonight, but coming from resident of the city for over sixty years, living on East Mountain Ave for over sixty years, and living through two schools, and now hopefully not three. Not in any particular order, but the playing fields, I used seven days a week, day and night, those lights shine in my bedroom, and I'm not complaining about that, I have no problem with that. So that was going to be a huge cut if we build the high school on that property. We would have to bus the kids to another city for sports, and that's going to be a cost to the city. The neighborhood doesn't need to go through a third school. The parking, it's again, regards to the parking at the high school now, they're already parking on East Mountain Ave, because there isn't enough space down there now. So if you take all that parking away and the construction, they are going to be parking in the neighborhood. It's a known fact. The construction trucks, the crews working all during the day during the school hours is going to disrupt the classrooms for both schools. And there's a, there is a huge safety issue. You're talking about that it takes you forty-five minutes to get home from, in the Wonderland area. Well, if I'm on Broadway, like at BCM Market, it'd take me thirty-five minutes to get home. Easy, easy. And that's now. That is not even counting a third school coming into the picture. Huge rat problem. We had that twice already, all the houses around. Those are all the, basically, the cons. Wonderland would be completed quicker, because you're not dealing with all the issues that we have down there with the existing. Wonderland has more space, and everything would be done at once, a school, your fields, everything without disrupting the existing. And basically, all the pros that, you know, with Perkins, I don't want to keep repeating, you know, myself, that Perkins Eastman explained. The city doesn't need any more apartments or condos, go down Ocean Ave, you can see it for yourself, especially at Wonderland. We do not need any more housing there. More housing brings in more kids, more kids, more schools, which we don't have. And Wonderland's been empty for, what, well over ten years now? I used to work there, I don't remember, it's well over ten years. Nobody's interested in purchasing that, because if they did, they would have already. It's the last piece of green left. And that's probably about it, I can go on and on, but I want to give somebody else a chance.
Thank you, Ms. Martino. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming up to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Dassie Sorrentino, Thirty-Nine Tree Valley Road. I hold in my hand petition that I went around my neighborhood one afternoon and have eighty people here, registered voters, I made sure I had them, registered voters, that do not want this in our neighborhood. People have already had house damage from having other schools built there, cracked foundations, we, like she said, the rat problem. It's, we have all the kids coming up the street from the schools, there's trash everywhere, they get the weekend, the half-a-day lunch, they don't want to eat it, so they...
I'm sorry, ma'am, do you want to submit those signatures to the clerk to put them on record?
I do not, because I don't, it's not a binding petition, it's just a petition that I decided to say that I saved you from eighty people coming up here tonight. A lot of them are elderly, they're third and fourth generations in this neighborhood. If they build that school, how are these kids going to go out and play in the backyard? There's dust coming up, there's dirt coming up, grandmothers have health issues. I'm one of them. I've been here my whole life, I have watched everything happen in this city. It's scary. It's scary to think that this is not an emotional thing, this is a matter of life and death for some of these people. You're going to drive them out of their homes, we're going to lose our property value when they start digging down there. Where are we going? You can't go anyplace else in the city, unless I want to go in a condo. I think we have enough of those, I don't need another one. I mean, I really think that, you know, everybody is upset in the area. People, I have stories from people from Beechmont upset. Why does everything have to be on this side? Let's move some of it over there and help us out. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Matthew Taro, Two-Fifteen Crescent Ave. I've talked at length about my support for the Wonderland project, I've created graphs, I've created educational campaigns, I brought a hundred and fifty kids, students, teachers, and staff to the City Hall steps in March in support of this. But tonight, I want to talk more on the financial. I want to talk about the hidden costs. When we look at, there's not going to be any parking. Every mother, father, parent, guardian is going to have to drop off their kid if they cannot walk compared to the hundreds of kids that park every day. Not only, and this is not only at the high school, it's also going to be at the RMA, this causes lost wages for many parents who work hourly, work on hourly wages, because they're not going to be able to get at work on time, and they're going to have to leave work early or arrange other childcare. Another economic cost is, we are going to be severely influencing traffic around Broadway and that whole neighborhood. Because of this traffic, people are going to get around less efficiently, and there's just going to be less people going to Duncan, there's going to be less people going to businesses on Broadway just to avoid that traffic. Furthermore, having to bus teachers, not only is that going to cause valuable education loss, as there's teachers who are not going to want to be, stay in this district, for the teachers that do, they're going to want compensation, they're going to want the extra hours paid, because instead of leaving at two-forty, they have to wait for a bus, go to wherever they park their car, and then they have to sit in Revere traffic again. Furthermore, taking away these parks severely limits parks in rec and what they can do with their programming, severely taking away one of the few childcare opportunities during the school year, during the summer, for parents that have to work. It makes them have to go out to other places and spend more money on childcare. Furthermore, while this might not have a money finger, educational costs, I've talked about it multiple times, there are hundreds, thousands of students that are going to be impacted every single day for four, five, six years, just because they have construction right next to their calc class or their history class. I went to the Beechmont, and then I went to the Garfields. I had trains, planes, and everything in between disrupting my learning experiences. However, what I didn't have was construction twenty-four-seven, every single day of my high school career, which is what you're going to put through, put students through for the next five, six years. And then, just to point out on some traffic and walkability concerns at Wonderland, as a member of the Revere swim team, I know the majority of my teammates have to walk across American Legion, they have to walk through Shirley Ave, they have to walk across these dangerous roads. What's going to happen to them and the other five hundred students who have to walk every single day now that they have to walk past an active construction zone? And other than that, I mean, just, I've said it for close to eleven months now, build this out, Wonderland, I just can't.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please. Could you just repeat that one more time, sir? I'm sorry, there was, can you hit the button as well?
This is a salad salad from Eighty-Seven Prospect. I've been working with the kids in the city for around twenty years. We started coaching soccer when the fields were grass, but it's now running marsh, and we have the tar field. And we have lost a lot of space already. I don't know much about finances and all the other stuff we're talking today, but to me, it's simple. Why we have to lose something that we already have? We already lose a lot of space. And if we have the chance to get another, another space and save what we have right now, I mean, to me, it's a simple decision, maybe, I don't know a lot of other, a lot of the stuff. Then, is, that we, are we thinking about the kids that training? We're training around three-hundred-and-fifty kids, two times a week, after the school hours. So where are we going to go? They say we accommodate. I don't, I don't see the city having another space where we can be going to train during seven years, and besides that, seven years, that means a kid that's ten years now is going to be seventeen, it's going to be gone, it's going to be in college. And also, the kids are going to be in the school, having a, having a building next to the, next to the school, they don't want to have a good life experience, especially to learn. And I'm so glad to be here today to be able to talk to all these people, all you guys, they really can make the decision. We're talking about millions of, that can, we can lose in revenue, but if we value the life of our kids, the time, how much, how much that cost? Does anybody can come up with a cost of that? This is, this is, I mean, this is the time that we can make it right, and that's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Edward Doe, Two-Sixteen Crescent Ave. I guess, you know, as you all know, I am a proponent of Wonderland, and I guess, and I know you guys are going to be going through this thing with a fine-through comb over the next few weeks, and we keep talking about making sure that all of the numbers associated with this project, both sides of it, are identified, and I just want to make sure that as you're looking at the costs of the existing site, that you work in there the cost of busing for the student athletes who will never be able to practice on their home fields, will never be able to have home games on their fields. They're going to have to be bused somewhere else, and that's going to cost money. One million, three million, what is it? We need to identify that number. It was brought up by Carl Swenson that because of the situation with the building and construction on the site, there will be no space for parking the school buses and other school vehicles. That needs to be relocated, and there's going to be a cost with that. What is that cost? That needs to be identified. All of these things go into it. The other part to it is, is I got to believe it's going to cost city services to address and manage all of the complaints and the issues that the neighboring community is going to have to deal with during this construction. What's that going to cost? You know, so there are a bunch of other costs in here that need to be included in there, and there's, and when we talk about, and it's been said over and over again, what's it going to cost to build a new middle school? Because we will no longer have a high school to create a middle school from. What's that going to cost? And, you know, and what's it going to cost for the potential delays? We all know there are many, many risks, more risks. I'm not saying there are no risks at Wonderland, but there are many, many more risks at the existing site than there are at Wonderland. What's the cost? And what's it going to cost for delays? They're going to come when those risks become disruptions, and they will, as was pointed out earlier. One other thing I wanted to point out is, and we keep going back to the whole thing about eminent domain, the city paid twenty-nine-point-four million, it's been bandied about that, hey, we could pay upwards of a hundred million dollars. Well, you know, I keep hearing we need to be realistic about numbers. That number is not realistic, we know where it came from. It came from agents working for the property owner who were trying to feather their nest to make more fees. We know that. If you look at what it costs Suffolk Downs to buy that property, or HYM to buy Suffolk Downs, with a hundred-and-fifty-five million dollars or nine-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars per acre, when you translate that to what the site with the acreage at Wonderland, it comes to about twenty-six-point-nine million dollars, about three million dollars less than what the city has already put up. Are you telling me that's going to go from that twenty-six-nine to a hundred million? When you look at what it is, and when you compare that to what Suffolk Downs is getting for acreage, it's the same acreage price, and I got to guarantee you, regardless of what some visions are, Wonderland is not as valuable as Suffolk Downs. So when you look at that, Suffolk Downs is nowhere nor near more valuable than, I mean, Wonderland is nowhere near more valuable than Suffolk Downs, and even if you doubled that number, it's still half of that one-hundred-million dollars, and I think it's ludicrous to think that number is a number we'll have to pay. The last thing I wanted to mention is another cost, and I'm not sure where this fits in, but I think it's something we all need to consider, and that's the cost of lost education resulting from the five years of construction. Okay? Think about this, and there have been studies done, and I've used some of these studies to come up with some of the numbers here. COVID lasted two years, and we all know the impact that COVID had on the education of our students, and you know what? More importantly, their lifetime earnings, okay? Their lifetime earnings are, have been impacted, and looking at some numbers, and one number, trying to downplay and not overstate numbers, three-point-five percent negative impact on lifetime earnings. Now, if you take into account the median income for a single person in Revere from twenty-twenty-one survey, I think that was done, you know, that comes down to roughly three-hundred dollars a year in annual loss revenue, fourteen-thousand dollars, fourteen-thousand over a lifetime, but that's one person. Let's take one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six students at the Revere High School. and multiply that times $14,800, and you're looking at approximately $427 million in lost earnings. That translates into less money available to Revere residents who graduated from these schools, less money for them to spend, less money for businesses to make, and less taxes for our city. So that is a number that we all need to look at. When we're looking at all the numbers and the impact of the decision on where we build this school, building it on the intact, in existing site is going to have a severe impact on students' ability to learn. Again, you cannot, if you look at COVID, and I understand COVID was two years. This is five years. Okay? And I've tried to understate and downplay those numbers. They could be a lot higher. See, 247 million is quite a high number. So that's another number that I think is worth thinking about. And I want you all to consider that. I want you to all make sure that you consider those other numbers that I mentioned as well. Because I, I want to see a fair and balanced thing. I don't, you know, I want to see numbers, realistic numbers being used and, and, and to come up with a great decision that is going to really put our city and our students in a position to be able to grow and prosper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devoe. For the remaining, remaining people in line, I apologize. We still have a full agenda ahead of us. If you could just make your points, I'd greatly appreciate it. You're all going to get an opportunity to speak, though. Thank you.
Anthony Pazziali, 51 Arcadia Street. I'm not speaking for or against either location, but I am confused. And I know it's not the council's job to help confuse people like myself. How can we be considering Wonderland? I thought it was voted that we were doing it at the existing site. And if we are not going to do it at, at the existing site, will you guys be voting tonight to allow Wonderland? The only reason I ask is because these people are going to go back and they're going to sure enough come in front of you guys with Wonderland. We know that. So how, how does that process work when they show up? I guess what I'm saying is I'm confused. How can they be working on Wonderland when it was voted that we are working on the current site? I'm not for or against either site, guys. I don't care. If you guys want to put it on Wonderland, great. If you want to have it at the existing, great. I'm just confused about the process. And if I'm confused, I think other people are. So if someone could explain that to me, please. If, if not, you can just email me it if you don't want to take up the time, the council's time.
It's a new legislative session. Short answer.
So that means that the site, the existing site is not where the school is currently supposed to be going?
Right now?
So what you guys vote, sorry, council president, so what you voted on last year, that doesn't exist?
That's not what that means at all, Mr. Pazziali.
Sorry.
That's okay. It means that currently, the building committee is moving forward with schematic design at the existing site, but there is a play to put it back at Wonderland. It's allowed this year because it's a new legislative session. Short answer, and if there was one other question you had, I, I.
If they come to you with just Wonderland, would you guys have to revote to change the location?
Yes.
That's all I want to know.
Thank you. Good, good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Try to be brief. Revere has two fields, sports fields.
I'm sorry, sir. Name and address really quick.
I'm sorry, Wilson Correa, Sweeney Ave.
Thank you very much.
The city of Revere, over 60,000 citizens and growing, has two sport fields. Neighboring towns, minimum that I know, they have minimum of seven or eight fields and just fields that I cannot name in. Building, the Wonderland location will give us a little more fields, much needed. I coach kids. When I go to the field sometimes, I have to kick the kids out. I say, guys, I need a field. Guess what those kids are going to do on the streets? I said this before. When we keep kids occupied, it is less taxes in the city for less trouble in the streets. And also, these kids being in sports gives them more, they mature more about being in a, in a professional environment. So we need those fields. The second topic is about building a high school, building over at the Wonderland will give us a much-needed mid, central middle school. Over time, we are in the need of a middle school. My daughter was sent to school, to home a couple of days ago due to a broken pipe over Garfield. So it looks to me that we need a, much-needed middle school, central middle school. In 10, 15 years to buy land in Revere will cost us on the, on the billion numbers. So we can save money now, but we're going to pay it later. I rather, I don't think we're going to spend money like they described. I think the, the Suffolk Downs will cover the expense for the high school. But in, in, if we don't do it at Wonderland, we're going to be paying a lot of money in, in the future. I know everyone wants to go home, but I have more points. But just please consider Wonderland. I think it's for, for the citizens, the kids, and the future of Revere. I think it's, it's the best decision for, for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Marie Gennery, 26 High Street. Also speaking on behalf of my mother, Regina Gennery at 38 East Mountain Ave. So we're longtime, lifetime Revere residents. So what I'm here to do tonight is to ask, and particularly the new city council members, to do their homework and to do their due diligence, which I feel hasn't been done very well by folks in the past. I ask you to put politics aside and to make the right decision for the city, for the community, and for the residents. So I think we should reconsider moving the school back to Wonderland for a few reasons, and I will say them. Building the school at Wonderland will first and foremost save money in construction costs. Yes, we have to buy, yes, we have to buy Wonderland, but the city needs that land anyway. We're going to need it in the long run, so buy it now. But we will save money in construction costs. Building at Wonderland will allow existing sports field to remain operational so that athletics and sporting events can continue, which is critical to all of our students and families. Building at Wonderland will allow a quicker and easier construction process. You heard from all of the experts here. They all agree Wonderland is a better site for many reasons. The Wonderland site will provide the city some time to plan for and properly address the culvert, which we know is a significant project that needs to be handled correctly. Building at Wonderland will have minimal residential impacts. My mom lives on East Mountain Ave. She's 83 years old. I don't know if she will be able to live through this construction. You have to think about noise, pollution, traffic, trash, et cetera, et cetera. That area has bared the brunt of burden with the other two schools. So we have, we have, we have pitched in, and we have done enough as a neighborhood. Building at Wonderland will provide the residents and the students of Revere a high school that they can be proud of and one that is better positioned to handle the future, handle the future growth of the city. We know the city is getting bigger. We have more children. Wonderland will allow us to plan for the future. The one, building at Wonderland will also allow the current high school site to be repurposed, something that the city critically needs. We learned from this process, the city does not have any available space to build anything, not only schools, but anything. So I ask that you do your due diligence, do what the voters want you to do, do your homework, and make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Stanmetropolis. I live at 15 Soul Street in Revere. So coming up here tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, I am in support of the site at Wonderland for all of the, the reasons that were articulated tonight, for the lack of interruption to the abiding residents, to the, the space, to the ability to expand that school where we should have learned from our prior schools we built. They were already at capacity by the time the doors opened and we had no room to expand. So I think that gives us a great option. When you look at the schematic layout there, it's not optimal. We're forced to build within a certain footprint that isn't ideal, but we're working with what we have. I understand that. With the acquisition of Wonderland, we still retain the land at the existing site. That does give us options in the future in the, in the event we had to sell one of those pieces of property. We retain that land. With Wonderland, I know we're hearing anecdotal evidence of this much money would be on the tax roll. Well, based on what we learned tonight, the, the tax revenue that will be realized from Suffolk Downs is about a decade out. So the facts are, the majority, many people in this room won't be alive by the time any revenue from Wonderland would be realized if we're able to attract commercial development there. And we have acres and acres of commercial land for sale in Revere right now, Sozio, other areas, that we can't attract anyone other than Dollar Trees and Czechs Cash and liquor stores. And maybe we'll get some storage units, but that's what you're going to get. So if you do not put this school at Wonderland, you will get thousands more apartments, and then you'll get some more storage units and some more Czechs Cash. But that's what will become. And the other thing I put out there, when Rich Fiske identified ways we could increase revenue, ways we could cut expenses, to increase revenue, yeah, we had to build. And that's why we've developed every patch of land in this city to get revenue. Nobody wanted to talk about cutting expenses because it, it impacts employee salaries, right? And many people in this room were city employees. I get it. So I just ask that we do consider Wonderland, bringing it back there for the benefit of our kids. So thanks for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record, sir.
Steven Damiano, 172 Prospect Avenue. Thank you for this time, guys. I'll be quick. I am pro-current site. I just want to remind everybody that if we move the high school, what's going to go there? Okay? All these people that have problems with the construction for the high school being built up there, well, if we build a middle school there, eight years down the line, going to have the same problems just without the potential business revenue coming from Wonderland. So that's all I'm going to say. Just, it's been said tonight to make a decision between the easy choice and the right choice. Please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hello, Director Wells. Name and address, sir.
Good evening. Michael Wells, 76 Ambrose Street. Like many of the other residents had spoken about, I live on Ambrose Street. You look out my front door, the park is right there. We lived through the Romney Marsh build. We had cracked foundations. We had cracked walls. We had a huge road and issue way back when. With that, at the current site, we're, we're trying to just make it fit, right? We're trying to put a 10-pound turkey in a 5-pound bag. Doesn't work. Ambrose Street just got new streets, new sidewalks, okay? Now we're going to come in, we're going to tear them all up. We just got a $2 million park this past summer. We're going to tear that up so we can hot top it to park the cars, okay? I don't know if anybody was around during the Mother's Day storm about 15 years ago when we had four feet of water in Ambrose Park. Any heavy rainstorm, right now, Wednesday, we're predicted a, a ton of rain, right? Ambrose will be a lake. Water just flows down, has nowhere to go. So how are we going to remedy that? Other than that, that's all I have. The only thing I can say how we'll remedy it is, is a sales sign up front of my house.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
Hugo Rizzuto, 265 Rice Ave. I'll be very brief. I'm not here to discuss the benefits of the project, whether I'm for Wonderland or the current site. What I do want to caution this council is you are asked on the 29th of this month to make a decision on a project that you don't know exactly what the cost is going to be. Okay? They love throwing numbers around. I saw it at the Gibson Park project over there. I saw it at the Point of Pines Fire Station, and everything always goes over budget. They're throwing $40 million out there. I think you need to know better numbers. The other issue that I see here is that, yes, the city owns the property, but I'll tell you, the city is in a corner. Because, as you know, lawyers like to extend things because they make more money. Okay? They're going to litigate this here as long as they possibly can until the city gives in. So what I would recommend is that you take the mayor's offer that he made tonight up here, and each and every one of you, sit with the mayor, sit with the solicitor, sit with the treasurer, okay? And figure out where's the money coming from, not only now, but over the next five years. What if we have a downturn in the, in the economy, not only at the city, but also at the state level? Okay? So you need to know realistically what the project is going to cost, where the money is coming from, and where you stand with the ownership of that property. Unless you know those three things, you should not be voting on anything. I don't care how fast they want to rush you, okay? You should not be voting on something that you do not know. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to put this into the committee of the hold for January 29th at 5:00 PM.
Next item on the agenda, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for Ward 5 air quality monitoring.
Would the council be opposed to a quick two-minute recess while the audience exits the building? Two-minute recess, please? Five-minute recess, two minutes, three minutes? Council meeting is now back in session. Could everyone please have a seat? Let's get some order. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for Ward 5 air quality monitoring.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, councilors. Tom Skarsky, 281 Broadway. I thought everybody was here tonight to hear me talk about the air quality sensors in Ward 5. But I believe everyone heard me speak on this in December. I won't belabor the point, I'll take any questions that you might have. This is just formalizing the communication from December that the council voted on.
Any councilors have questions? Councilor Zambudo.
Can we just repeat what's on the table here, please?
Madam Clerk, would you mind reading the communication?
So I'm good with this. This is... No, 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 I do care about the equality. This is going to be monitored by MIT, is that correct?
It'll be monitored by Northeastern's ISUP program, so, you know, it's a research arm of Northeastern, working with students, professors.
You know, I just want accurate data because we've been given false data with these monitors before, and we don't want to see a repeat of that. And as I said back in, what was it, December, that I would be happy to pay even more to make sure they're accurate monitors, and we're not monitoring the roadway debris and calling it wind waste, or calling the water, the wind coming off the ocean and saying it's coming from wind waste, because that's what we had, and the guy lost his job that was doing the reporting. So I want accurate monitoring, that's what I want.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you. To councillor Zambudo's questioning, I've had a air quality monitor to monitor the planes going over Beauchamp for the last four years. Tufts University is calculating, every single week they'll calculate whatever's in that machine. I know from experience that Massport had a six-year study before this happened, and they came, it came out inconclusive because they couldn't monitor the trucks and whatever else was going on, so they made it inconclusive. But I really do feel confident with Tufts University taking the data, and they're taking pollution, they're taking emissions, they're taking noise, they're taking everything, and they take it every single week. And they're not charging me anything, actually, they're giving me some money for electricity because there's two big gigantic monitors in my yard. So that's, that's the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors? All right. So we're going to take a roll call.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund in the amount of $25,000 to the Ward 5 air quality monitoring account? Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And councillor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to support the renovation of Leech Park.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, again. This is an appropriation that will be matched by roughly $185,000 in CDBG funding to give a facelift to Leech Park. This will include updating the wood fences, ADA accessible entrances, leveled, and improved stonedust walkways, landscaping, tree plantings, as well as lighting throughout the park. This was done in partnership with the ward councillor and residents of Beauchamp through a series of community meetings this fall where we arrived at the plans that are before you this evening to improve Leech Park. Happy to take any questions on it if you have them.
Thank you, sir. Any councilors wishing to speak? Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you're saying that you're matching the CIT money, $185,000?
That's correct.
I asked probably about two months ago on how much CIT money that would come out of my ward, and it would, I never got an answer. I got about $31,000, that was it. I just think $185,000 coming out of my CIT money is a lot of money.
I might have misspoken there. $185,000 is from CDBG. It will match $30,000 in CIT funding.
So I approve of this. Thank you.
On that note, let's move to a roll call.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund in the amount of $30,000 to the Leech Park renovation account? Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And councillor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Thank you all.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of various boards and commissions members.
This is going to the Appointments Subcommittee with Chairwoman McKenna. What we are asking is that everybody that is up for reappointment or appointment to be at that meeting. Ms. Councillor McKenna, if you have any comments about this?
I think if we're having a board meeting at 5 o'clock, I think that board meeting's going to be, for the 29th of January, I think that board meeting's going to be at least an hour, so I'm going to ask for the first week in February.
That would be February 12th.
February 12th.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Don Martelli to the Library Board of Trustees.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Samaya LaRusi to the Human Rights Commission.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Hector Rivera to the Planning Board.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Herbie Jean Baptiste to the Human Rights Commission. Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Wilson Correa to the Conservation Commission.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Matt Wolfher to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by councillor Zambudo that the mayor request Chris Charamella, acting Water and Sewer Superintendent, to appear before the city council to give a thorough presentation on the lead in your drinking water pamphlet that was provided to all residents.
Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was, a lot of citizens got the brochure and were scared that they had lead, so I wanted to bring him back up to re-explain it, but we have reached out to these citizens, so I'm trying to debate whether to withdraw this or not. I think it might be helpful if he comes up and does it again, just for those who didn't get the information, because it's, the pamphlet scares you to death. It makes everybody think they got lead pipes and they don't. And so, let's keep it. That's the reason for it, anyway. Thank you.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? Permission to speak from the chair?
Go right ahead.
Thank you all. I just want to reiterate, in speaking to Chris Charamella, I know that they were very limited about the way that they could edit that pamphlet. It was really not something they could do, but I agree that, you know, it was very scary to a lot of people, so. With that said, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by councillor Zambudo that the city council order to a public hearing a proposed ordinance establishing a stabilization fund for drainage, stormwater, and culvert projects.
Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is obviously, the reason I put this in was because of what we talked about tonight, the culvert. That culvert, whether the high school is the site for the new high school or not, the existing site, that culvert has to be replaced, and has to be replaced now. And I'm hopeful that we replace it now and build the high school where it is. But in any event, we should have had this kind of a fund before, and we need it now more than ever, and so that's why it's in there. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors wishing to speak?
Point of personal, no, point of order, please?
One moment. We're going to order this to a public hearing on January 29th. State your point, councillor.
Can we take up the late communication right now for John, because he's been sitting here waiting?
So we would need a suspension of rules.
So moved.
So, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, suspension passes.
Okay. It's the late motion, Ashley?
Calendar item number 27, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of John Stametopoulos to the Planning Board.
It's just going to go to appointments, unless we'd like to vote on it tonight. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by councillor Argenzio that the mayor request the Traffic Division in Mastott to investigate the feasibility and funding source for the installation of an overhead flashing light at the intersection of Broadway and Mountain Avenue for the safety of students walking to Riviera High School.
Councillor Argenzio.
Yes, Mr. President. I've had several residents call me about this intersection. We've discussed this intersection at length, over several years, and what to do to try to mitigate the dangers there. I'm not in favor of a full set of traffic lights that would interrupt traffic flow, but a overhead flashing light just to reinforce the stop signs that are there, I think, would go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
It's noted that councillor Zambudo was recused from that previous motion. Council, I'm sorry, calendar item number 20, motion presented by councillor Garino Sawaya that the meeting room in the Pointe de Pines Fire Station be named in honor of former and longtime Ward 5 city councillor, John F. Powers.
Councillor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, councillor president. John has dedicated 23 years of his life to Ward 5 residents. He has done so much for Ward 5, and I think the least that we could do is name the fire station meeting room after him, since this was his baby, and he tried to see the whole project through from the beginning to the end, and it would really be an honor, and I think he deserves it.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody wishing to speak? Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so happy that councillor Garino Sawaya put this motion in. John, his goal was to build this fire station, and I think it's nice that we're naming something after somebody that's still alive, and John deserves this more than anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna?
I would just like to say, this is a wonderful, wonderful motion. Thank you very much, councillor, for putting this in.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to echo all the councillor's statements regarding John Powers. He's a longtime city councillor, over 20 years. He dedicated a lot, a large part of his life to serving Riviera, and he did so with a lot of pride, and even though he battled health issues the last few years on the council, he did so with pride, and he did a great job, and I think it's important that he's linked to this project he was so passionate about. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors? I just want to say that this is the perfect way to honor that man in his years of, I don't think, when you think of Ward 5, you think of John Powers. But now you think of our new Ward 5 councillor. Sorry, had to save it there. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by councillor Garino Sawaya that the mayor request the Traffic Division to install speed calming measures on Mills and Rice avenues, such as removable speed bumps and/or flashing electronic speed limit readers.
The Ward 5 councillor, Garino Sawaya.
Okay. So I've had numerous complaints from people over near Mills Ave on, at Oak Island, I'm sorry, in Riverside, I'm sorry, of cars during the traffic hours in the morning, even though they posted signs that say, "Do not, you cannot go down those side streets," they're still taking those side streets. And what's happening is, as soon as they get to Mills Ave, they're flying down to get past the traffic and beat the light. So they're trying to eliminate all the cars that are coming from, say, John Ave to the set of lights. So that's what they're doing. So they're, instead of going 20 miles an hour, as it stated, they're going 40, 50 miles an hour. So it's really important that we do something to slow the traffic down and maybe let these people stop doing what they're doing. And the same with Rice Avenue, as it's a beach, what happens is the kids are coming down off the walkways, and the cars are coming flying on Rice Avenue. I would actually do two instead of one. I don't know if it could be amended to two on Mills Ave, and two removable speed bumps on Rice Ave as well. And the police can decide on where they think would probably be best to stop the traffic from flying. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by councillor Haas that the mayor be requested to reinstate the weekend workout program at the Riviera High School gym on Saturdays. This was an effective program used to combat isolation, inactivity, and to provide a safe space during the colder winter months.
Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. With the pandemic, we learned the toll that isolation and inactivity can have on residents of all ages. An open gym at a small cost to the resident, one day per week, would be hugely beneficial for our own residents' physical health, as well as their emotional well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by councillors Silvestri and McKenna that the city council order to a public hearing zoning ordinance relative to home-based childcare.
Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had this come before us a few months back with the former council. It went into zoning, kind of died. But I think in the past few weeks, I've had a lot of investigation on my own, in coming up with data, and some of the staggering numbers. I recently joined the Board of Directors at Capic, and they interviewed 300 people. They do childcare, housing, rental assistance, heating assistance, and they asked them their number-one issues. First was affordable housing, number two was affordable childcare. Since 2019, childcare's gone up 32% across America. In the time that we've seen the rise in inflation in the past two years, childcare has doubled what inflation has. It's up to us to give the people of our community an affordable option to provide their children with childcare. Because what it's doing, it's driving single parents into gig work, and they come home from a day job where their child's in daycare, then they pick up their child, and they go and they do Uber Eats or Instacart, and they're driving around a child who's staying out later than they probably should, and they're with their who's staying out later than they probably should, and they're with their parent, they're probably eating McDonald's on the fly or Burger King, and all because they have to pay and work additional hours to pay for childcare, or one of a spouse comes out of the workforce. And it's up to us, I think, to step forward and really to put a change to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's very sad, a lot of parents are negotiating between rent and childcare, and it's just very sad. I think, I know that this came up in our last year, and I know one of the conditions were, one of the concerns were, that if a person had a pool, the kids would be compromised at a house. There are ways to keep kids safe by fencing also. I really feel that every single person that has childcare in their house should be certified with first aid, just in case something happens. So I really do think this is necessary for the city. They have it everywhere else, and I think we should move forward and come to some sort of conclusion for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support this. However, it got bogged down in committee because of the timeframe last time, but what I would ask is, before this goes to a public hearing, that we send it to the zoning committee so we can work on the amendments and we can propose it as-is, as we want it, and not have to deal with the amendments later. That's what happened last time. We didn't get the amendments in, and it got stalled in committee. So this is a way to get it done correctly. We'll send it to committee, we'll take care of the amendments, we propose it as we want it, and so that's what I would ask. But I positively do support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jaramillo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great motion. Thank you, Counselor Silvestri, for introducing, and Counselor McKenna for introducing this motion. As we know, home-based childcare providers provide a great service to our community with average childcare costs ranging between $20,000 and $30,000 per child. They're properly regulated by the Department of Early Education and Child Care and Care, and provide not just the service for parents, but for the economy of our community. As Counselor Silvestri aptly pointed out, parents are engaging in the gig economy as a way to mitigate their childcare costs and avoiding good-paying jobs that don't provide childcare assistance to them, because they need to find childcare. So thank you again, and, you know, I look forward to speaking and talking, working more through this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? This is going to be ordered to a public hearing. Oh, I'm so sorry, sir.
No, that's okay. I just want to say I'm 100% behind this. All this does is take our ordinance and put it in line with what the state already regulates, so I think it makes sense, and it's going to be a windfall for the parents in Revere and the childcare providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You'd rather put this into?
To do it the way Counselor Zambudo is asking to do it, you're saving, because once you have that public hearing, the 90-day clock starts, and if you don't finish the amendments within 90 days, then you're going to have to advertise the thing all over again.
So this is going to afford us extra time to, absolutely. Any objections to that? So we'll put this into the zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number 24, Motion Presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor be requested to hire a part-time building inspector to work from 5:00 p.m. Thursday to 5:00 p.m. Sunday due to the illegal construction occurring throughout the city after City Hall business hours.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to call you Counselor, Cogliandro, but you're not anymore. Yes, he is, but. This is ridiculous. I get calls all the time that people at 5:00 Thursday, 6:00, people are building all kinds of illegal things. About two years ago, we put this in, I put it as a motion, and it was, they hired someone or they gave someone some extra salary, and it was done for about two months, and it died. But you can see the illegal, these people are not pulling permits, they're coming out of the woodwork, they're building decks, they're building gazebos, they're building everything. We really do need someone to answer to, we need someone to answer to and call out these people, so I would really like this to be passed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes, I have a suggestion. I know other cities and towns give a stipend to carry a phone, much like the city ad does. Rather than hire someone full-time, there might not be enough work for them, but give a stipend, they have the phone, something comes in, and they can respond. The city ad uses this very effectively.
Thank you, Counselor.
I would agree to that.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Do we want to amend the motion? To the clerk, we're going to have to put the amendment to...
So the amendment, I guess, as proposed by Counselor McKenna, please correct me if I'm incorrect in hearing this, but the mayor be requested to provide an on-call stipend to a building inspector on, after City Hall business hours?
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
On the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number 25, Motion Presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the appropriate department to install metal detectors at the main door and install new locks on the rear doors of the council chamber for the purpose of protecting the City Council and the public in attendance at meetings.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So in the month of December, we got two, the counselor, the council got two threats. One was by email to a counselor, a former counselor, and the other one was sent to the mayor's office, that a guy was going to come in and shoot us all. We cannot, you laugh, sir, but we cannot take this lightly, especially in these days now. Anybody can come into this council, we're sitting ducks. It's not funny, sir. I'm sorry. This is a serious, this is serious. Okay, thank you. You know, we're sitting ducks, and the public too. We have anybody who can come in here, and if they don't like what we're talking about, you know, it can be chaos. So I talked to Chief Callahan about this, because in the month of December, he had four undercover cops here, plus he had other officers here too. But I talked to Chief Callahan about this, and he was the one that suggested us having a portable metal detector right outside this council chambers on council meetings, and also...
Excuse me, sir. If you'd wish to speak, you can wait until the counselors are done, and then you can come up to the podium and speak.
I also would like to have these doors behind us protected, because they are, they can be opened very easily, and there's access from the elevator up to the back of us. So I would really like your vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Garino Sawaya?
I agree with Counselor McKenna 100%, wholeheartedly. In this day and age, as people are just going into schools and shooting up schools and stuff like that, you never know what's going to happen, and I totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one question. Is this just for outside the council chambers? Is that...
Yes, it wouldn't be for, I mean, we could put it for City Hall.
Outside City Hall?
We could. I mean, the State House has it, and they have to go through a metal detector. It's going to cost $5,000. That's what he told, Chief Callahan told me. It would, the cost for the city would probably be $5,000.
And would there be a company that would, that would be there to work it, or would it be?
It would probably be a security company, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. So my only, my only concern, I don't know if, would a police officer, as we had in the past, with a wand, be more cost-effective than bringing in a company and metal detectors to monitor to the door? I think maybe the looking into the feasibility, because if we bring in the detectors, we still have to have someone to, a security guard or cop to stand there and work the, if it beeps, is it up to us to stop them? So...
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
I'm not sure. We might need a little more information on what we're going to get, and how we're going to pay for it, and who's going to man it. I'm in favor, don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of the motion, but I think it needs, needs to be refined a little bit so we know more information about it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Yes, I, there's something, I don't know, there's something that they can't use the wands, they just can't, and I don't know why, but we could put it in public safety and have a conversation about this, and we could ask Chief Callahan to come up and talk about this, too.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I've done security in all different forms for years, and you can speak, sir. You can speak when it's time for the public comments. Okay, so after I'm done, there's no other counselors? I can't wait. So as, before I was interrupted, I lost my train of thought here. Let me guess, so as, yes, as a security professional, I just, I also want to make sure that we include the liability that comes with having to, what happens if somebody walks through the metal detectors? Are we, are we doing pat-downs? Are the officers doing pat-downs? I don't know the legalities behind the wand, the wanding, but I do agree that we need some sort of security just for the safety of not just us, but for the people who come and watch the meetings. But I just, I think that the best course of action would be the Public Safety Subcommittee. If anybody has any opposition, let's put this to the Public Safety Subcommittee. Oh, I'm, sir.
May I tell you about a couple of experiences I had with the police department?
Sir, if you're going to speak about what I think you're going to speak about, no.
Yeah, well, I've had, I've had several...
This has nothing to do with the motion, sir, and you're not allowed to speak about this. Yes. Well, your business does not belong in front of the council, which is why you're not going to speak on it. You're welcome. Enjoy your night.
Calendar item number 26, Motion Presented by Counselor McKenna that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Luigi's Pizza in recognition of their 42 years of being in business and for their generous contributions to the community.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Counsel, Mr. President. I can't get it right. This is, I'll keep my comments from, for the next meeting, but Luigi's Pizza has been in Beauchamp for 42 years, and they always give free pizzas, and they're always very generous, so I'll hold my comments for that night. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Seeing that there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned. The next meeting will be January 29th. Have a good night, everybody.